Welcome you to our Thursday, August 22, 2024, 9:00 AM meeting of the Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees. We've got a lot to go over today, but want to welcome those that are joining us in person and those that are joining us online, especially our board members. We also have, at every possibility, invited the two candidates who are applying for the job to be the next Treasurer of North Carolina to visit these meetings, whether it's Local Government Commission Pension Board Banking Commission or Supplemental Retirement Board or any of the other meetings that we have. And Brad Bronner is here this morning, who's one of the applicant nominees to be the next Treasurer. And we also invited Wesley Harris, and sometimes Brad can come, Wesley can't come, sometimes they're both there together. So we just want to be equally hospitable because as Harlem Bowles always said, this is an important role, and I think anytime they can kind of visualize what's going on and see how the staff presents, I think it's ultimately good for our customers. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Please stand and join us for our pledge of allegiance and also our salute to North Carolina flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of North Carolina and pledge to the Old North State love, loyalty, and faith. As a reminder, if anyone wishes to make a public comment, please sign up with Patty and Patty and all the staff who makes this jump up on the table. We have a public comment section. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and being posted online as well as all the board materials. We ask that you mute your phone if you're joining us remotely or in person, and we'll be taking roll call by name for all votes. Unless there's objection, I'll consider a motion and a second to a motion being yes votes for efficiency purposes. Board members, if you leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure and if you return, announce your return as well. These items must be recorded in our meeting minutes. Likewise, before speaking, be sure to mention your name so we can get this recorded. Finally, and very importantly, text or any recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal phones, are deemed to be public records to the extent that they concern the meeting itself. Now, before we go to our swearing in, I'd like to ask the Secretary to call the roll. Treasurer Falwell, here. Charlie Perouse.
Here.
Lorraine Johnson. Lorraine. Lanier McRee.
Here.
Greg Patterson.
Here.
Bob Shea.
Here.
Raj Singh.
Here.
Steve Bean.
Here.
And Robert Hillman. Did Robert join us at some point in the future? We'll be recording him as being present at that time. Introduction and swearing in of few members. We have Mr. Charlie Perouse, Lanier McRey, and Raj Singh to the Supplemental Board of Trustees. I want to, on behalf of the Treasurer's Office, extend a warm welcome to our U.S. Governor-appointed board members. Charlie Perouse will replace Chevella Thomas. Charlie retired in, I think that's a misprint, Charlie. Charlie retired in 2022. As the state budget director and currently is self-employed and business and finance consultant, I'm sure he's very busy. I've worked with Charlie for a very long period of time and look forward to my remaining time here and working with him on this board. Lanier McRey will replace Nels Roslin. Lanier is the Assistant State Budget Officer for Budget Development of the Office of State Budget and Management. I was with Nels Monday. Before she left office, State Alter Beth Wood worked tirelessly to get the National Association of NASAC, which is accountant, auditors, treasurers, and controllers, to have their national convention in North Carolina, and that's going on this week in Charlotte. So I was with Nels earlier and I've enjoyed working with him on this board and will continue to work with him during my remaining months as Treasurer. Raj Singh will replace James Lundston. Raj is the Chief Risk Officer for Bagaya Technologies with more than 25 years' experience of banking and financial services. If I can clear my throat enough, we'll do this ceremony and thank you and welcome to our board. And we look for all of you to bring originality, diversity, and activity to the board. So in closing, I'd like to welcome Charlie, Lanier, and Raj, and we're happy to have you. And with that, we'll take Lanier first. I should have worn my lifts. Do you, Lanier McRey solemnly affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as trustee of the Supplemental Board, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Raj?
Actually, I'm wearing a jacket, sorry.
Use this one. Okay. Raj Singh, do you affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as trustee of the Supplemental Retirement Board, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. I was just going to do that, hoping to do it respectfully. Sorry, Raj? Charlie, we're doing, he's not here, he'll be at the meeting, at the meeting in December. We'll just do him in December. I've heard him for him. Did you hear that, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I'm surprised you didn't say, now you're gone to meddling.
There's plenty of time for that, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you for the warm welcome and I look forward to being formally taken, doing the formal protocol in December when I'm there in person. I'm at the University of Louisville right now doing some interim CFO work, so I look forward to being in person at the December meeting.
Good. Well, the Executive Director of NASAC is from Kentucky, so you're in good company. Raj, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, really pleased to be, pleased to be here. I think when I was told about this, of course, I didn't know what it was, but I look at all the board members and what you guys have been doing. It's really a part of my privilege to be part of this group, and with my experience in risk management for a very long time, hopefully I can, I can contribute something for the benefit of the people of North Carolina. And I live here with my wife and three kids, one of them is now in New York now, but we live in North Carolina, so look forward to meeting you all and getting to know you. Thank you.
Lanier?
I'm pleased to be here. I'm as the Assistant State Budget Officer in Budget Development, and in my career with state budget and the Fiscal Research Division at the General Assembly, I've covered salaries and benefits issues for a long time. I do presentations almost yearly for our team on lunch and learn on the retirement systems and the supplemental retirement plans and advocate for everyone starting to contribute to either or both plans. That's a unique benefit we have as a state employee, so I'm excited to get to be a part of this.
Well, thank you all for joining us. You're, I think you will be impressed with how well this plan runs, and not me, but the folks that are represented here are the reason that happened. So any good news that I bring is because I'm standing on the shoulders of these individuals. So the, there's some hard work that has been done before you got here. After a seven or eight year period of time, this Board of Trustees decided to not be in the business of things we can't be great at, and one of those things was the 403B program. After years of trying to make that jump up on the table, it just was not successful in terms of number of accounts or assets under management. So this board made the tough decision, and thanks to the staff, including Jeff and people in this audience, we were able to wind that program down, get people transferred into 401 and 457 opportunities, which has about 16 billion in it today. Seventeen billion. Seventeen billion dollars just in those other two programs. To tell you, 403B had 31 million. After eight years, only had 31 million bucks. And as Warren Buffett always taught me, it's hard to be as smart as some of your competitors. And I believe just in Mecklenburg County, for example, there are six vendors, not, not six investment selections, six vendors of 403B programs just in one county. So you can see just how confusing that can be, and we just were not able to, with what was going on, build that program up. But excited about being, continuing to be great in the 401 and the 457 plan. After I'm gone, you and the next treasurer, I hope, will continue to advocate, which we'll talk about maybe in a moment, getting the General Assembly to start, even in a small way, a 401, 457 match for state. Raj, we, in this building, we managed $250 billion. Pension's about $123 billion this morning. The 401 is 17 billion, and that represents only about half of what we do here. But given that, we have statistics that show that we manage money for the state employees as well as the local employees, and there's nearly a 50% difference, 50% difference between the participation rate of the local employees, 50% higher than the state employees. And one reason I think that is, is the not having a 401 or 457 match. So this year, I proposed a $25 match. There's a major article in pensions and investments this week about how matches disproportionately help people who make what I make versus what average state employees make. So I recommended a $25 match because we had to start somewhere. And as, as small as that seems, if my memory is correct, a $25 match is about $111 million recurring in the budget if we have a 70% participation rate. So you, this board, the next treasurer, hopefully through the General Assembly can, can make at least a $25 match jump up on the table. And the reason I was not in favor of the percentages is for the reasons that I never, didn't know were going to be outlined in this P and I article this month, that there's nobody who needs to be more retirement-ready than those people who don't make as much as I make. And that's why I started 25 bucks. So 403B, thanks to Greg and some other folks on this board, that it's hard decisions have been made. Thank you, Greg. And possibly getting a, at least a $25 per month match for our state employees to jump up on the table, I think will highly encourage people to start putting money into 401 and 457. So enough of that. With that, our Ethics Act, we have an Ethics Awareness and Identification of Conflicts of Interest. Members, you've seen our agenda. Does anyone have an actual potential or appearance of a conflict of interest regarding matters that are coming before us? Okay, hearing none. Should a conflict arise during our meeting, please let me, as the Chair, know that so we can, our legal counsel can deal with that. Statement of economic interest, in your board book, we have a statement of economic interest for Charlie Perouse, Lanier McRey, and Raj Singh, and those are provided to us for our meeting minutes. If you have any questions about those statements of economic interest, please don't hesitate to ask. Starting, we will, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolutions and appreciation for the services of Controller Nels Roslin, James Lundston, and Chevella Thomas as members of the Supplemental Board of Trustees. I don't think there's necessary for me to make those resolutions out loud, but so moved, entertain a motion, and we have a motion of second.
Second.
All right. Motion of second being made, thank you, Lanier. And any further discussion about these adoptions of these resolutions? Okay. As we do these resolutions, I will be signing those and also take the person's name tag and write a little note on the back of those and I send them with the letter also to let them know that there's, being on this board was not a noun, it was a verb. It's something that people have to do, and it's just a reminder of their, their presence. So we have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk of call will. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Raj Singh.
Aye.
Steve Bean.
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, without objection, we'll combine the approval of the meeting minutes of May 23 and July 11, 2024. Hearing no objection, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 23 and July 11. So moved. Okay, thank you. Second.
Second.
That was good harmony, but we just came from the guy who said it. All right. Motion of second being made, any further discussions regarding the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, the clerk of call will. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse.
Aye.
Lanier McRey.
Aye.
Raj Singh.
Just a clarification, I was not at the minute, so I should say aye, I was not at the meeting.
So do I still? You're still on the phone. Okay. Steve Bean.
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
Upstee.
With that, we'll now go to our Administration Transition Update Audit Annual Update, and I know that there's a possibility of people in the audience have to, cannot stay for the whole meeting, and we, we understand that, and there will be probably a situation or two where we have a board member who basically needs to leave the meeting temporarily. We understand that. So I'll now turn it over to Reed, I guess. Jeff?
Thank you. Just wanted to give everyone an update on the transition over to the Npower platform. As you know, that occurred back in February of this year. We had, we had some discussion in the May board meeting around some of the first occurrences that had popped up as a result of that transition. We're about six and a half months in now on, on the new platform. At the time, we had seen some payroll delays mainly from our multi, multi-frequency employers. I'm proud to say that all that is back on track and we're trending back now to just our, our normal levels of, of activity.
Explain to them what a payroll delay would look like.
Yeah, so we had.
Mind if you name people?
So we, we have, we have some employers that have multiple, multiple payroll cycles, so that they have weekly, bi-weekly, monthly. On the old, on the old, a potential platform, the payroll frequency was not a, was not a necessary component in the actual payroll file. Moving over to the Npower platform, it was, and so when files were coming in that did not have that, did not have that indicator on it, it caused some delays in getting the, in getting those files processed. So we've had to go back, work with all of those employers, have them alter their files that they send in to include, to include that indicator, and a lot of work's been done by the Npower team to make that happen, and again, I'm proud to say that we're kind of back on track with all of the payroll processing.
Approximately how large of an issue was this?
We had, we had 40 employers that had.
How many?
Out of over 1,000, but they tend to be some of the larger employers. So, you know, not big in terms of the number of employers, but certainly they represent some of the larger employers in the program. We also saw some, some latency issues in terms of the website as well as the mobile app. Npower's put some, put some more horsepower behind that, and we've not seen any of those, any of those issues as of late. There still is one area where we see some opportunity, and that is, that is with the call center. We have seen improvement from the transition, but we measure our service level of calls being answered within 20 seconds, and currently we're at a 55% service level for that happening. Average speed to answer is currently about, about two minutes, down from about six minutes just after the transition. So, you know, we're still wanting to, you have to place a lot of effort and focus there and get that, get that service level back to where it has been in the past, which has typically been in the 80% range. So again, a lot of focus will be placed there, that kind of will help to kind of get us back to a, back to a business-as-usual state in terms of the transition. Any questions around the transition at this point?
Jeff, I've never been big on averages. Are there other measurements? What percentage are going more than three minutes? What percentage is going more than five minutes?
Yeah, so I don't have, I don't have those stats. I don't know, Mike, if you might, if you guys may have any of that.
I can definitely dig into that. That's something that I don't actively see in the, I get, but I can see if we've got another layer deep than just the base reporting that we.
I've been interested in that. I, my oldest daughter and I averaged four years at NC State. It took her three years and it took me five. So that's an average.
One of the stats that we, that we, that we do look at, Greg, is the abandonment rate.
Okay.
That would be people who call in, they wait a certain amount of time, and they choose to abandon the call.
Okay.
That rate is around, is around 5.7%, much higher than what we would like to see. Certainly we'd want to get that down to, down to under 1%.
Okay, thank you. We need to go to executive session about what, it took you five years or? Mr. Treasurer, are there minutes taken during executive session? Yes, no, sir. Statute of limitations has expired. Congratulations to your daughter.
All right, transitioning.
Before you move on, I would never share anything in this meeting that is, I don't consider to be public record. We do have some school systems across North Carolina who have embarked on new IT back office payroll systems, and no other word to describe it, in many instances, they've been disastrous. We're, in my home county, Forsyth, people not getting paid, us not getting paid, pension credit not being, being assigned, and it's pretty obvious that our two biggest retirement times of the year are the end of the year and the end of the fiscal year. So when people have had these jobs and are trying to figure out what their retirement's going to be and trying to make a decision, and it's very difficult for RSD and our staff to really calculate what your years of service are if the years of service have not been properly reported to us. Number one, as you move forward. Number two, there's been an announcement, the Controller's Office, that I don't want to speak out of tune, but there's a chance, a possibility that statute had not been followed in terms of when people are paid, and that for, bless, Charlie, you can educate us on this, but for a long period of time, we sort of prepaid a lot of employees in the, during December, so that they would have their money for Christmas shopping. Found out that that may violate the Emoluments Clause. We don't have to tell you what the Emoluments Clause is, but generally, we cannot give things to people without getting service and something in return. So I think there's an announcement that came out of SCNC and some other groups over the last two weeks that they're going to be fixing that this December so that people are paid at the same time of the month in December as they are in other times of the month. If I've said anything incorrectly, then somebody please correct me. The reason I'm mentioning that in this meeting to this board is that oftentimes, when it comes to things like I've just described, we get blamed for it. We had nothing to do with what's happening in Forsyth County or Gaston County or any of these IT systems. We have nothing to do with the decision being made to pay people in December like they begin to pay every other month. So I just wanted to share that with you, that we do everything we can to work with these other organizations, you know, to get the right message out. We're not pointing fingers at people, we just, since we do answer our phones at the Treasurer's Office, which is sometimes unusual in state government, we. That was Treasurer Huber, thank you for that. I get it. We, it just, it's important that I tell the board that these kinds of things are going on behind the scenes. So if you hear about it, you're on this board, I didn't know anything about that. What are they talking about? We should have done something about that. We'd be glad to answer any questions, but I just want to say that as you keep going through your report, this is some of the things that we deal with in the background.
Thank you. Now I want to transition into present the results of our 2023 financial statement audit. For the, for the new board members, we do an audit of our financial statements every year. And first, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our, thank our partners in the Financial Operations Division. They're the ones who actually prepare the financial statements for the audit. They do a wonderful job, they do a lot of heavy lifting during this timeframe for us, and so a big thanks to the teammates over in the FOD group. With that said, the audit, the audit subcommittee met on July the 11th with our auditor UHY, and I'm proud to present that the auditor's report resulted in a clean or unmodified opinion.
Unqualified.
Unmodified opinion. In respect to the, into, with respect to the internal controls over the financial reporting and on compliance and other matters in accordance with the, with the governmental auditing standards, there were no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies were identified. In addition to testing the financial statements, we also choose 25 of our employers to do an audit on their, on their operations as, as it relates to the plans. We choose our 10 largest employers, and then we choose 15 other employers at random. This year's testing resulted in six findings. The categories of those findings were situations where the employer had failed to capture an employee election change. We had a couple of employers that were allowing employees to change their elections within their office versus using the proper systems to record those changes. And then we had two employers that were including items in compensation that are not eligible compensation in terms of. compensation in terms of or for purposes of calculating the retirement amounts. And those were healthcare premium reimbursements, cell phone allowances, and sign-on bonuses. And so we are currently working with those two employers to understand the magnitude of that, and we'll be remuating that as we need to going forward. With that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions about the 2023 financial audit.
Is this a biannual thing?
It is an annual thing.
Thank you for that update. Now I'll go to Reed to provide us some administrative updates. And these updates will require board action.
I had several amendments of the plan documents and a correction to one of the policies. And as I go through these items, there are several of them. If you have any questions along the way, please ask. And then, as Treasurer said, I'll vote at the end to approve these amendments. First, the most important and possibly the most impactful of the changes involves expansion and revision of the NC 401K plan's eligibility provisions. There were two recent changes to state law to expand eligibility for the plan. These changes are shown in Attachment 1 in your materials, and Attachment 2 has the amendments that incorporate these changes and other eligibility changes in the provisions in the plan document. One of the eligibility changes was included in a revision of a law that passed last year to restructure UNC and ECU healthcare systems. And the new law this year makes employees of the newly created UNC healthcare system eligible for the NC 401K plan. The second eligibility change was one that was proposed by DST. The goal was to bring eligibility for our 401K into line with our 457 without placing additional burdens on employers. So as background, if an employer elects to participate in the NC 457 plan, then in general, all of its employees are eligible for the plan. However, eligibility for the NC 401K plan is generally determined by an employee's membership in a pension, most notably teasers and elders. Members of judicial and legislative retirement systems or a pension that's sponsored by a local government are eligible. In addition, law enforcement officers are automatically eligible. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, UNC healthcare system employees. The new law adds two groups of employees to the eligibility list for the NC 401K plan. First, we have some employers who have, some employees who are eligible for the plan and some sort of split eligibility employers. For example, you might have an employer who participates in teasers, some are teasers-eligible, some, such as part-time employees, are not teasers-eligible. Therefore, those who are teasers-eligible, also eligible for the 401K, are not part-time or not teasers-eligible employees. So the new law would change eligibility so that all employees of these split eligibility employers are eligible for the 401K, most notably part-time employees and retired retirees. The second change allows any employer to participate in the 401K, to opt to participate in the 401K, even though none of its employees would otherwise be eligible because they're in teasers, elders, et cetera. For example, you may have a charter school that elects not to participate in teasers, but that charter school could then elect to participate in 401K, which you couldn't otherwise do today. In addition, while we were going through, making these two significant changes to eligibility, update to statutes, we made some updates, other updates to eligibility provisions to bring them more in line with state statutes and how we, and the current structure of the plan. The next item implements provision of Secure 2.0 dealing with catch-up contributions. And as background, participants who are 50 or older can contribute an additional amount above the standard limit to 401K and 457 plans. The additional contributions are known as catch-up contributions. Also as background for this year, the standard contribution limit is $23,000. Catch-up contribution limit is $7,500. Secure 2.0 increased catch-up contributions for employees who are age 60 to 63 and effective the first of the year, first of January 1 of 2025. Catch-up contribution limit for ages 60 to 63 will be 150% of the normal catch-up contribution limit for 2024, or $11,250. And beginning in 2026, this new limit for ages 60 to 63 will be adjusted for inflation in a similar manner as the normal catch-up limit. And Attachment 3 in the materials has the plan document that incorporates this new catch-up contribution limit for ages 60 to 63.
Reed, how does an average person my age who wants to catch up, mechanically, how's that happen?
I will let Empower speak to more details if they want, but what happens is if you go over the limit for the year, the standard limit, then there's a check, all right, what's your age? And if it shows that your age, you're eligible for it, that you're automatically bumped up to where you get that. So it should be seamless on the employee's end until you reach standard plus catch-up. So you wouldn't need to do anything special to elect it. And I will--
Okay.
--pause if I said that--
Get to there when the time comes.
Okay.
Just be sure to cover up on that.
Okay.
Are you going to do it now?
Sure, yeah. So if a participant that's in that catch-up status wants to take it, that, there's multiple ways they could do that. Obviously, through our call center, they could do that. We're working with one of our dedicated reps throughout the state, will assist them through that process and then help them fill out the necessary paperwork or take that action. And then, once we have them confirmed as part of that process, we'll feed that information back to their employer so that they then defer that out of their paycheck and into their 457 or 401K plan. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Treasurer?
That's fine. The reason I ask is that any time that you get into an overpayment or overcontribute to these plans, and you get into an IRS vortex that you probably can never get out of. So that's why I just want to be extra sure that we're measuring five times and cutting once, because, as I say, when you overcontribute to these plans and the IRS dings you for that, it's just really, it's like Hotel California. You can check out, but you can't leave. So just be really careful about this.
I add a little bit of context there. Yeah, that's something that, you know, so we make sure we're working with participants on that. Also, a lot of your employers, their payroll systems that they use also monitor for those top limits. Where things do get complicated for your employers is especially in the 457 plan, where the state 457 is a side-by-side option with like another vendor, very similar to like the 403B, where then that payroll, if participants are contributing to both, you know, it's very difficult for us to see that they're also contributing, so it's rarely essential for that employer to monitor where all those deferrals are going so they don't go over that limit. So that's something that at the local level, there's a lot of importance paid to that, to monitor that limit.
Thank you. And my last comment is that this is not negative or positive. Just be aware with the vacancies we have in state government, vacancies in local government, the turnover is happening in those two entities. It's great to assume that our HBRs or HR directors are doing everything they're supposed to be doing, but sometimes things do fall through the cracks. If it falls through the cracks, then it results in something from the IRS. It's just really hard to unwind all that, so that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
The next amendment, Attachment 4, provides more flexibility for employers to make matching contributions in the NC 401K plan. The 401K generally requires uniform contributions, whether it's in terms of a percentage of compensation or a dollar amount. For example, an employer can't match dollar-for-dollar up to 5% of compensation for some employees, dollar-for-dollar up to 3% for others. However, in response to a match program by one of our employers, staff supports limited tiered matching, in which an employer may decrease its match as employees contribute higher percentages of their compensation. For example, assume an employee contributes 5% of compensation to the NC 401K plan for the first 3%, the employer matches dollar-for-dollar for the next 2% on the dollar, just as an example. Staff supports this tiered approach as a way to provide a little bit more flexibility in the 401K for our employers while still preserving the plan's fundamental principle of offering employer contributions on a uniform basis. The amendment presents or permits an employer implement tiered matching contributions based on a percentage of contribution contributed by employees, subject to three restrictions, which you'll see in the amendment. First, only two tiers may be used, one for employee contributions up to a certain percentage of compensation, and another for greater contributions up to a maximum. The match must decrease from the lower employee contribution tier with higher, so you're not favoring higher compensated employees, and the match in the tiers must be the same for all employees. Next up are a few minor changes to bring loan provisions and plan documents in line with our policy on loans and longstanding operation plans. Those changes are in Attachment 5. The issue is when a defaulted loan ceases to count as an outstanding loan, which prohibits a participant from taking another loan. As background, you're permitted only one loan in the 401K and one loan in the 457 at any given time. And a defaulted loan ceases to count as an outstanding loan if, one, you pay it off with accrued interest, or the participant becomes eligible for a withdrawal from the plan. For example, the participant is no longer employed with a state or local government employer, and that latter situation is referred to as offset. That's when a defaulted loan counts as an actual withdrawal from the plan, and so your account balance is reduced accordingly. Next, in Attachment 6, it removes Appendix B and Appendix C from the plan and related Each appendix was a retroactive amendment to address an employer error. The board adopted these last year. This was part of a resolution with the IRS for these two errors. However, the amendments have no ongoing effect, and they can be removed. The next item is implementation of another Secure 2.0 provision. The amendments in Attachment 7, which apply to both plans, streamline the process to access funds when participants suffer losses from a federally declared major disaster such as a natural disaster. Instead of a case-by-case approach, the amendments establish a standard ongoing distribution option of up to $22,000 of economic losses for each disaster. They also permit participants to re-contribute within three years, whatever they take out for these disasters. That's similar, you may remember, that's similar to the CARES Act provision. And then finally, there's a very minor correction to the policy on participation and beneficiaries in Attachment 8. Are there any questions?
About half of these are things that are being thrust upon us, and about half are things that we're cleaning up. Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair.
Okay, all right. Entertaining motion, and then we'll get a motion a second on the table, and then we'll go into discussion. Motion to accept staff recommendation for these planned documented policy amendment updates.
So moved by Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Second. Raj, Raj, second. Any further discussion, Raj?
Yeah, just a question that compliance checks of these, after these go in place, is it an annual? I mean, because some of these are very nitpicking kind of details. Are they checked annually, or at what frequency do you look at that we are actually complying with these kind of detailed changes?
So the changes we make, when will we look to see if we're complying with these particular changes?
Right.
So that is--
Sorry.
Part of it is communication. For example, to take the eligibility changes, that is going to be communication out to employers and employees. That's the kind of thing, the eligibility, that those tend to get caught if there's a mistake, either the audit, because it's one of the 25 employers gets audited, or one of our, one of Empower's counselors is working with the employer and you realize, oh, well, no, you actually need to do that, and then we step in, work with the employer and Empower to make the correction. The things like the catch-up contributions, those are more automatic, those are going to be more just making a system change. The other, with the tiered matching contributions, that's more, that's communication as well. When we catch an error, whether it's in the 401K, for example, making an error in employer contributions, which we actually, as Jeff mentioned, that, once again, that's the audit, that's usually the audit, or it's a retirement education counselor who's working, oh, no, that's actually not what you're supposed to do. On the employer contributions, we also have a form that employers are supposed to fill out and get approved and say, here's what we're going to do, and so there's a check on that as well. So on the loans, that would be, there's really no change in process on that. That's really just bringing the documents into line with what we're already doing. So it's a combination of communication and then audit, retirement education counselor.
Thanks. Why I ask is because some of the changes, you can have system changes, IT changes will catch that so that the new policies are in place. For some of them, you really have to go and test it individually. So I've seen stuff falls through cracks when you make those changes, and those specific things are not looked at, and kind of you find out much later.
And one of these, with the two Secure Act changes, we're not getting ahead of Empower on the system side, so we're not proposing a change that we haven't already, that they had already told us, yeah, we can implement that, not just for us, but for all their clients.
Has there been any opposition to these? Is there any opposition to these changes?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion a second on the floor. Hearing no further discussion, the clerk of court.
Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse.
Aye.
Lynda McRae.
Aye.
Greg Patterson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
Aye.
Thank you, staff, thank you. Next administrative update, North Carolina Supplemental Retirement Plan, second quarter administrative update, welcoming Matt Cole and Matt and Rob. We're going to have Rob stay there.
Have Jody join us. First and foremost, thanks for the opportunity to be back here today and meet so many nice new faces. Looking forward to working with both of you.
All right, this, for the secretary, Jody, your last name?
Musso White.
Okay. M-U-S-S-E-L. Okay, anyway.
All right, so Matt's going to do a more formal introduction of Jody, but I'm very happy to share that, I talked with staff about this a little while ago, Matt has accepted a new role with Empower, a leadership role, where he's going to be responsible for the retirement education counselors across the whole region of Empower's governmental book of business. So one of those plans is going to continue to be the North Carolina plans. Matt will still be intimately involved with the North Carolina plans, but just very happy for Matt in this new, next step in his career. And that leads to--
And that leads to why Jody's here. Jody's been a retirement counselor for the North Carolina plans for over 25 years, give or take, Jody.
Over 25, yeah.
Yeah, 25 years, and she's, she's based in the Charlotte area. So she is going to replace Matt as the leader of all of the retirement education counselors across the state of North Carolina. So we don't have a speaking role for Jody today, we just wanted to introduce her. She's been getting up to speed in the role, and I know Matt's going to do a more, more formal introduction of Jody, but just wanted to share the news on Matt and Jody and make sure that we introduced her to all of the board here, and then hopefully at the December meeting, Jody will take the role, the reins for Matt and give the update for the field team. Well, Matt's getting out of here without having to arm wrestle me for last. You know, Mr. Treasurer, Matt and I were actually looking at photos, we still have that photo of you and him arm wrestling from five years ago. Got that. Jody, I know better than arm wrestling even.
Sir, you plan.
All right. All right, so for our update today, we'll try to keep this high level and respectful of your time. I'll give an update of the overall key statistics, and then turn it over to Matt with the update for the field team. I think that Jeff's update from the migration summarized it very well. I want to make sure that I just thank again Jeff and Tom and all of the staff for all of the collective work that we've all gone through from migration six months ago to get here. If, you know, Jeff's mantra from the day of migration has been to get back to BAU as soon as possible, I think that we've made tremendous steps since the last update in May of getting back, back to BAU. Jeff mentioned some of those things. Obviously, from a, from a call center perspective, there's a lot of good work that's being done right now to get us back to where we need to be. You know, year-to-date, there was definitely an impact as we went through the migration process in terms of the additional calls that we were getting from participants just navigating the systems change, combined with some turnover in our call centers. So we've recently done a lot of hiring, we're doing training, and those numbers are, to Jeff's point, they are getting back closer to where they need to be. Just really quickly, you know, quarter-to-date, we're answering 65% of calls in 20 seconds. However, month-to-date, so far, we're answering 81% of calls in 20 seconds. And then our, our call quality of how we score the calls, participants are asked to take a survey afterwards, those results are continuing to trend in the right direction as well. So still a lot of work to do. So I don't think that where we are in the year that we're going to be able to make our, our performance guarantee around the call center times, but I expect by the end of the year, we're going to continue with positive momentum and be able to get in 2025 in a much, much better position than where we are, where we are today. Another embarrassment, what is the financial implication of you not hitting your performance guarantee? Don't quote me on this, I want to say it's $10,000 is the performance guarantee on the call. Per second, per call? Jeff, I think you might have in the, in the back of your report. Yeah, that's okay. I want to guess what it is.
It's $20,000.
$20,000 for the year?
Yeah.
All right. If we look at... I mean, that's half of one employee, not much of a, it only. Well, we have a lot of different performance guarantees. I mean, a third of them. Total that add, that add up if we're not doing, if we're supposed to be doing. You guys have definitely got your teeth in us. All right. If you look at, if you look at page four of the report, you can see the statistics for the, the rolling, rolling 13 months. Really happy to see from a active participation rate, average participant balance, and then average monthly employee deferral, that we continue to all have great trends there. The one trend I would point out on page four is that distribution activity in 2024 through the first two quarters is high, both in terms of just people separating from service and withdrawing money, but also in terms of rollover out activity. I'll, I'll show a nice slide that goes into a little bit more detail on that later in the report. If we move over to, to the next page, on page five, we continue to set new records in terms of total unique participant balance, where we're down north of 316,000 participants in both of the programs. Goalmaker, for those of you that are new board members, Goalmaker is the asset allocation tool that we make available to participants, and we continue to see good, good numbers there in terms of usage, not only amongst all members, but also new members that are enrolling in the program as well. And then loan activity remains consistent. So the one call out that I want to quickly mention to the board, and I know Matt's going to speak about this as well, is that from migration to date, the enrollment activity has looked a little bit lower, which has caused a lot of consternation with all of our conversations with Jeff and staff, like, is there something that we're missing here in terms of enrollment? So Matt and I have been really going back and working with our, our data and reporting folks just to make sure that we were accurately capturing all of the enrollments, if there was something that we were missing. And the good news is, is that there was something that was missing, we weren't pulling in the full amount of all the enrollments that we were, we were generating. So we're going to have all of the reporting updated when we get to the, to the third quarter report, but very happy to share that from going through and looking at all of those enrollment numbers, that the trend line in terms of enrollments is much healthier than what it appears on the slide. So I just wanted to point that out today, and then when we're, we're back here at the next meeting, we'll have updated statistics. But I would, but based on, based on the updates that, that Matt and I got just a few days ago, our 2024 numbers are, are right in line with some of the best years that we've had, like 2021, 2022, 2023, in terms of generating new participants into the program. So what you just described, is that systemic to all the Empower platform, or is it specific to us? Specific to, to you guys? We want, so part of, part of the North Carolina plans is everything, everything for your plans is customized, so it was a very customized detailed calculation that was being done in prudential, and it was really getting into the devil and the detail to make sure we were still doing an apples-to-apples calculation on how that was done on the Empower system, so we're just trying to marry those up. Okay, thank you. And then if you go to page six, this just shows some of the, the averages again, the average monthly contribution rate for participants is $284. Active participation rate is 35. For, for the new board members, both of those statistics are near all-time highs. I'm dating myself, I started working on the North Carolina plans in 2013. When I started, started working on the plans, the average monthly contribution rate was $120 per pay. It was gone from $120 to $284 in that timeframe, and then the active participation rate was about 27%. And we're now, we're now over, consistently over 34, around 34, 35%. We've also... The participation rate's 35%. Yep. State, local, combined? That's combined, yep. So, yep. Would you want to, because I don't want, then, our new board members to be confused about what I said in my opening remarks. Yeah, yep, so it's, yeah, great call outs, we just talk about this. Talk about averages again, about how long... Yep, yep. Thank you, congratulations, state. The active participation rate is about 5%. In order to be considered actively participating by the 25th calculation, not only do you need to be enrolled in the plan, you need to be actively deferring in the plan. So if you, if you're enrolled in the plan, but for whatever reason you've stopped contributing, you're no longer counted as, as actively participating. So you're participating, you're just not actively participating. So where, where the devil gets into the detail is the split that the treasurer was referencing earlier, on the difference between a state employee and a local employee. At the local level, we have about 500 employers throughout the state that offer some type of an employer contribution program, and that is the, like, gasoline in terms of participation in the plans. Where at the local level, the participation rate is, like Mr. Treasurer said, about 50% higher at the local level than it is the state level, where there is no employer contribution event in any way. And that's, that's why you see the difference there, if we break it out by employer, the active participation rate. Plus, they use that as a recruiting tool. As a person that's... Retention tool, recruiting tool, yeah. Right, good. Because a person's deciding if they're going to be a public servant, if they're going to go to elders or teasers, it may be a deciding factor. And like, just to, to add a little bit more color on, on that, you know, from sitting in, sitting in all of the pension meetings over, over the years too, and listening to the conversations there about the employer contribution to the pension, one of the things that Tom's always had us look out for in terms of the supplemental plans, that is, is, does, is that affecting any of the employers, like, from changing their contribution to a lower amount, or stopping it, or any of those things? We have, we have yet to see those headwinds. We are just something that Matt and I were actually talking with Jeff about yesterday. We're continuing to see another healthy year in terms of the employers at the local level that are either starting some type of an employer contribution or enhancing it to make it healthier, but we have yet to see anyone stopping it or reducing it. So it's just another interesting thing, because like, for a couple of years now, I've been expecting, because of the headwinds with what employers are required on the pension, that eventually that may have a, an effect on these plans, but so far, we have not seen that from an employer contribution perspective. Thank you. The last one slide I want to do is... I do need one, I want to think, some, over the years, as I've been semi-pressured to all of our enrolled members, that you are enrolled, period. And I resisted that because I think that can lead to activity without accomplishment. What you're shooting for is to get people retirement-ready and to actually defer. And that's why I was pushing on the state 401, 457 match, because that, I think that would dovetail very nicely into any type of old enrollment policy the next treasurer will need to consider. The last slide that I want to focus on is slide 35, which just, just shows snapshot of distributions and rollovers over the past rolling 12 months. This is a new slide that we built a couple of years ago to just try to capture of all the money that could be eligible to leave the program, how much of it's stayed in the plan versus left. So the definition of eligible, we take a look at anyone that is in separation of service or termination status on our plans, that could, if they wanted to take a cash, a full cash with distribution, or do a rollover out, we try to track that. So that, that top chart there shows that over the last rolling 12 months, you look to the, the far right, total percent of assets saved, you know, 94.55% of all assets that could roll out have still remained in the plan, but just to give you, like, again, the, the totality of how massive these plans are, you're still seeing significant rollovers out. So for the second quarter of this year, in terms of cash distributions and rollover distributions, rollover outs is about 167.9 million, and cash distributions is 168.2. That is definitely trending higher than where we were last year. Rollover outs through two quarters last year was 117 million, so this year 100, just under 168 million. And cash distributions this year, 168. Last year at this time, we were about 100 million. So the, the number of folks also taking those is up, so it could be a trend of additional retirements this year, and also then just ongoing interaction that all of your participants are faced with in terms of, you know, brokers reaching out and trying to advocate for those assets leaving the program when they, they don't need to leave the program. So we also track on this, just, you know, the top firms for where those rollover outs go. I would add for the new board members that this is something that we've been focusing on for the last eight years. I know what people make is public record, but I've always been amazed at how seemingly, intuitively or whatever, that people are, these vendors are able to determine who's retiring and, and market to them. I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of people making a living, but, I mean, I'm in favor of people making a living, I'm, I'm not in favor of people being confused at one of the most high anxiety points of their life, which is their retirement. And there's many studies about this. Somebody offering them something that's more expensive and less opportune than what they can have in this plan. So we, we've been on a mission to explain to people that even after you retire, you can leave your money in this plan for as long as you live. And we're, I hope the next treasurer will continue that, because I don't think anybody can do it as efficiently as we can from a basis point standpoint. Secondly, we have a form now that people can take advantage of. So when they have a Series 7 or one of these other types of vendors who are making all these wild promises about how much better they can do, we actually have a form that our members, that we developed, that they can print off, and they make the, the other vendors sign their name to that form, comparing basis points, comparing customer service, comparing all these different options. So I'm very, we've been, this board's been very big on trying to educate our members that just because they retire, because people make all kinds of decisions when they retire, just because they retire, this is one decision they do not have to make. They can leave the money there. All right. With that, I'll turn it over to, to Matt to give the perspective from our retirement education team.
Good morning, Treasurer Falwell, members of the board. Welcome to new members. Thank you to staff. I do want to spend a few minutes this morning, and I'll cover our heating activity, I'll talk a little bit about actions of these employers, focusing, might hit on some of that, I'll go a little deeper, and then also give you some perspectives on heating. I'll briefly embarrass Jody a little bit more. Jody does have 25 years of experience, so Treasurer Falwell, we talked about, we stand on the shoulders of many. Jody is somebody I know I have probably stood on the shoulders of as well as this program, just a tremendous amount of experience over 25 years. Just blessed to be able to work with Jody, and that she's taking on this expanded leadership role. Rather than me talking about Jody, I actually have a letter that one of Jody's employers sent to her recently, within the last couple of months, and I figured I'd read a couple excerpts from that, because I think this speaks volumes about Jody. They write, "We are so grateful that you've had, that we've had you for this period of time. Your expertise and guidance have meant so much, not only to HR, but to so many of our new employees over the years. From project to project, we were fortunate to keep you as our NC representative. You're one of the most professional representatives that we have had the pleasure to work with. It's truly been a great experience." They go on to write, "For all of the one-on-one meetings, phone calls, the educational training, expos, the visits to your front porch," I want to learn more about that. "Many, many thanks for all that you have done for our organization and our employees." Thank you. They all, in this office, signed it. So this is one of the counties that Jody has actually worked with for 25 years. So really excited for Jody in her new role. She's still a part of the program, will be serving a lot in different ways now, so.
Draw your attention... It's okay to cry on the supplemental retirement.
I'll draw your attention to page 37, where you see a breakdown of the activity. For the new members, we have 18 dedicated retirement planning counselors across the state, doing a lot of activity, doing one-on-one meetings, group meetings, and they do a lot with the 1,000 reporters about as well. The numbers on this page are a representation of all that activity year-to-date. The data on this page is through June 30th. Top of the page, you'll see a breakdown of the second quarter, so you see April, May, June. Bottom half is a rollout for Q1, Q2, and then our year-to-date activity. A couple of things that I'll point out on this page, really to echo the comments that Mike shared, that Jeff actually mentioned earlier, with back to some of our BAU activity. Q1, we did see a little bit of a dip in our interactions, because we went through... Q one, we did see a little bit of a dip in our interactions because we went through an enhancement period with migration. There was new technology. We did a lot more with our employers and specific discussions with employees to help them through that. Really exciting thing when you look to Q two, we are seeing an increase. We're back to some of our normal levels that we've seen. I'll draw your attention to the top of the page. April was a very large month. We actually did a campaign that month. That was our spring into action education campaign. Did a lot of statewide events, a lot of regional events, all our local activity. We saw one-on-ones throughout that month and for the rest of the quarter, really getting back to where we've seen. We typically are doing about two thousand ish one-on-ones per month with folks. So you can see that broken out the top of the page. Group meeting attendance has been a little bit lower. When you look over the average for the last few years, we're actually right on track with where we were. Last year was a phenomenal year for this plan. We saw higher activity. We saw record levels of enrollments, as Mike mentioned. So we're seeing us back to where we've been in prior years, in prior quarters. Total engagements for the second quarter, bottom right of that top chart, twenty two thousand one hundred and eighty six attendees. And an attendee is a one-on-one meeting or an attendee at a group meeting. And so you can see that breakout there. Bottom of the page, you'll see the Q one results, the Q two results I just walked through, and then the year-to-date totals. One thousand fifty eight group meetings for the year so far through June thirtieth. Twenty nine thousand group meeting attendees, twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety four one-on-ones for total meeting attendance of around forty two thousand. The other thing that I will point out, and I think this came up in some of the prior conversations, we saw a huge increase in the number of employer meetings. A thousand employers out there, we're serving the needs of employees, but we do a lot with those local employer contacts, those in HR. That was the quote that I just read from the individual Jody's worked with. Finance folks, payroll folks, we have a lot of interactions. We track those meetings as well. So you can see that broken out. For year-to-date employer meetings, we've had two thousand five hundred and twenty three. That's actually about fifty percent higher than where we were last year. Most of that increase came in the first quarter because of the migration work. We're back to some form of normal. We do about three hundred employer meetings per month on average. And you can see in the top of the page, if you look at April, May, and June, we're averaging about three hundred. It's an indicator to us that we've come out of migration and we've returned to some form of normal. First quarter, we were getting a lot of questions. We've seen that really die down, but that's something we want to stay focused on. We actually do a lot of interactions. Jody actually hosts a quarterly webinar with all of the employers. We invite them. One of the topics we've had the last couple of quarters is using the new technology, using the enhancements on the website. We'll continue to do that because the tail's pretty long on helping people get through the change management curve.
Broke Matt to give a question. Oh, you have very good input metrics, but is there a way to figure out which is the most effective kind of for conversion on a enrollment standpoint? The group meetings or onsite or, I mean, the output is what we are measuring, right? That's how many new enrollments are there? So is there a way to figure out which is the most effective method?
Outcomes. Oh, what's the most effective medium? You know, one of the things we look at is meeting activity at the council level and how many positive actions come out of that. What we see with one-on-ones, typically we're targeting about sixty to seventy percent of the time. I think if we do the math on this plan, we're probably at ninety percent, if not higher. So one-on-ones is a very strong interaction. I mean, we're very focused on meeting the needs of folks in a group setting because we can scale up, we can talk to a lot of people. But a lot of those meetings, we're actually driving people. We encourage them to meet one-on-one. Our counselors do anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty one-on-ones individually per month. We'll do those virtually. We do those onsite. We find when people meet one-on-one, they tend to take more actions. And we can come back in future meetings and go.
Yeah, it's just good to know that because I know it costs. I mean, you have cost benefit, right? One-on-one costs more. But just to see which is the most effective channel getting more.
Yeah. And to that point, one of the things, you know, I'd say one of the good things that came from the pandemic, there was a lot of struggles. But we actually embraced the hybrid model and we did a lot virtually. The exciting thing is we continue to see employers and employees embracing that. We want to meet people where we are. So we go out a lot. We've really resumed our on-sites. We do about sixty five percent of our work virtually too. We're trying to balance, but we can bring that back in future meetings.
Thank you. And Raj, uh, it's a little bit raw, but the, the best thing that we can get thirty-year-olds to do is to ask somebody my age what they wish, I wish I would have done on any, any part of life. But if we can ever get an environment where the young folks who work in these organizations are asked or are able to ask the people twice their age, what do they wish they'd done differently as far as retirement readiness? That's the best advocacy we have.
Excellent point. You know, and I've seen it to the rest of the team. When we go onsite and a direct supervisor of an employee is there. I've seen folks just starting their career, they may be twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and they don't want to talk to anyone. They don't want to go in and meet one-on-one. And the supervisor stands up and says, hey, I made a huge mistake when I was your age. That local level direct supervisor report is huge. And we see that come through as we meet with employers. So we're also trying to engage them to help us help other people. So. Page thirty eight, you can see a breakdown of the last four quarters. We always provide a rolling four quarters of enrollments. So you can see perspective by quarter. If you draw a line down the middle of that chart, you look at just twenty twenty-four, visually you can see a big drop. This is to the point that Mike made earlier. We, uh, we saw some anomalies here. When we looked at other KPIs like contribution increases, total participants on the system, even our meeting activity. Everything else has been trending very similar to prior year. We thought it was interesting to see the drop in enrollments. Given we rebuilt some custom queries, we actually went back and discovered that one of them was going wrong. So when you see the adjusted results next quarter, you're going to see the Q one and Q two numbers actually higher. They aren't represented on this page. I'll just read the numbers to you roughly so you can get a sense of where we are. The numbers on this page for twenty twenty-four are eight thousand seven hundred and fifty enrollments. Pretty big drop year over year from the first half of last year. From the audit we did, we're actually up to eleven thousand four hundred north of that number. So we're doing some final adjustments, some final auditing. We will publish those final results. When we do, I think you'll see those quarter-by-quarter stacks very similar levels. Really exciting that even though we're a little lower than we were last year with those adjusted results, last year was the biggest month ever for this program. So we're actually in line with twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, maybe even a little higher than those on the, their own record. So we've seen some really good results, even in spite of the fact that we had a month where we actually had to take a break, help people through changes. To see those levels is really exciting. A lot more to share in the next meeting. The last thing I wanted to share is just giving some perspective on what's to come over the next ninety days. Right now, August, it's a big back-to-school month. So we're doing a lot in the K through twelve space. We have new teachers that are hired. You have administrative professionals, bus drivers. So we see, tend to see a lot of activity in the month of August with the hundred and fifty school systems. That work is going on right now. September is actually first responder appreciating month. One of the things we like to do throughout the year is pick a specific group and do campaigns and we'll engage them specifically. Now, we always are talking with those folks, but the month of September, we're doing a focus campaign with those on the front lines that serve police, fire, local law enforcement, correctional officers, thank you, EMT. So we're going to be doing a lot of statewide events, regional events, local level activity in the month of September to support that campaign. Right after that, we have October, which is probably one of the biggest months for this program. That's National Retirement Security Month. We tend to see a lot of engagements that month. Many thanks to Christie Farley and her team for helping us from the Department of State Treasurer. Do a lot with partnership with her for marketing and communications. We will see a lot of activity that month, statewide events, regional events, local activity. That's also tends to be annual enrollment season. So we see a lot of tie-in with state agencies and local government employees that are going through that process. So it's just a couple of big updates that we'll have the next time we meet in December. To underscore some of the things that Treasurer Falwell shared too, the needs of retirees and near retirees is huge. We do a lot of special sessions for those groups. We do a roadmap to retirement series. We actually partner with the pension team and we do joint DB DC education events. Those are very popular. One of the other things we do are proactive calls. Last year we were over three thousand outbound calls we made to those just entering retirement to make sure they know we're here to help them. It's kind of surprising when you talk to folks as many times we email and we talk to them, a lot of times they think they have to leave. So sometimes just letting them know, we're here for you and you don't have to go anywhere. We don't want you to leave. So we engage them, we'll talk to them, we'll help them, and we'll share updates on that. And then of course, we have our employer corner series coming up next month. So some of the things that Pete actually shared earlier, we'll be covering. And then some other topics. We tend to rotate topics every quarter to make each meeting unique and different, to engage employers to get their support, their advocacy and their partnership. And they have a lot of work that they need to do as well. So it's a great forum to engage them. So a lot of stuff in the works for the next ninety days. Employer actions, I know we hit that briefly. The numbers are not represented here because we came through migration. At the next meeting, you will see a big increase in the number of employers that have added plans, have added contribution programs. I think we're up to like fifty employers that have taken some form of action. Ten employers that have added a new plan within the system, twenty-four employers that have added or enhanced employer contribution program, and another fourteen that have added optional features. So that's something we report and get those numbers for the next month or for the next quarter round. How can I answer any questions? Any questions?
My thinking question with such a banner year, I mean, what are your? What, what happened in twenty twenty-three that the enrollment or activity increased?
It's interesting, great question. Twenty twenty-one was the highest year at that point. Twenty twenty-two was the highest year, then twenty twenty-three surpassed it. One of the things I think is the hybrid model. We started to leverage during the pandemic. So it's interesting, you know, like everyone in every industry, that was a huge change for us. We had done a lot as an organization, specifically as a team, to actually do some stuff virtually before COVID hit. And we were able to pivot very quickly. I think that plus targeting folks and doing specific outreach. We've really honed in, I think, on meeting people we met. Some like to meet onsite, some like to meet virtually. I think that's one of the big reasons.
Yeah, we also had a couple of employers who came on board with a contribution for the first time for their employees, which would spike the enrollment numbers for that particular time period. So Gaston County comes to mind, New Hanover County comes to mind. So there were, there were a couple of employers with large employee bases that started a, a match or an across-the-board or something like that for their employees.
It's a great point. You know, and that's invariably, we do a lot of new plan setups. We may implement new contributions. A lot with five hundred, we're running out of those opportunities. A lot of the employers have them, but some will increase. But that's a great point. We did have a couple of new ones. And we actually have a couple of employers we're working with right now that are going to do some things over the next twelve months and that, that may, so I'll just make it.
And as the board goes forward, just, uh, go ahead, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Rob. Yeah, I have a question of how is, how are, is social media being employed to sort of engage some of your younger client participants?
Yeah, I do believe that Christie is using social media on behalf of the State Treasurer's Office. I think Facebook, I think there's actually a couple of platforms that our marketing team partners with Christie. So I think that's used pretty regularly. Probably more we can do there. It's still early in the stages of that. But we do see activity that comes from that. It's hard for us to track because we don't have those platforms. But when we do that, when we drop campaigns and messages, and when we do our group meetings, we tend to see an increase in one-on-ones from that.
Right. Yeah, I guess what, why that popped into my head was earlier you were talking about, it'd be great to have, um, you know, some of the older, you know, more seasoned employees speak with some of the younger employees. And what popped into my head was, well, they can do an explainer on TikTok, right? Kind of walks them through it.
Yeah, can I make a motion? Can I make a motion that we have the treasurer do talk video to the younger generation?
Motion denied.
Not going to get that participation rate that you want.
We actually do, all joking aside, Treasurer Falwell, you, you did a video, I think, a couple of years ago, which we actually use in our meetings. I think it may even still be on the website. So we do use board video quite often. So thank you.
I think there's a law against state employees using TikTok for state purposes. So that's why I motion denied. So thank you for the suggestion. And just going forward for the board, just to understand that in some of these local matches, sorry, I normally bring things, but I didn't bring the sheet. I mean, it's over five hundred of these local entities, county cities, who are doing the 401, 457 match. And as you move forward, as this board moves forward, just understand that some of them just do the match period, whether the employee puts anything in or not. I'm not a fan of that, but we do have some, of course, your participation rate is going to go up if people are putting money in this plan on your behalf. You don't want to put any of your own money in it. So I think when you look at these statistics going forward, just to be aware that there's, there's these little nuances going on, even with the local systems.
Do we have that information available, the, maybe the, you know, the top twenty-five largest employers and what their contribution rate in their match is? It'd just be interesting to see. You probably looked at it before making.
We have a file on our website that contains all of the employers and what their contribution.
Okay, I'll dig that up.
The formulas are. And I will say that some of the local employers are, are upset about the employer contribution rate on the pension plan. And, uh, something has been predicted before I was the State Treasurer about how that employer, employer contribution rate is going to go up. They're generally shocked to know that the employer contribution rate for state employees is over sixteen percent. Where the local systems are paying probably about eleven percent this year, something in that regard. But the reason I'm drawing it to your attention is that and obviously as the Chair of the Local Government Commission, we deal with communities that are, can't, can't pay their bills at all. So a lot of them will institute this employer contribution, this match when they're not meeting the water sewer needs, they're not, they're having done their audits. They're fussing about the employer contribution rate. You can't have, I mean, these are voluntary decisions that these local employers are making to do these matches. So if they're struggling or have to cut things back, I would never suggest that, but it's just sometimes they don't realize how all this works together. The Local Government Commission, the pension plan, and the supplemental retirement plan. So. Any other questions? Steve from the, from the floor? Other than out of order, out of the out of order motion for me to do TikTok.
Well, I did notice the phone rang twice. Nobody answered it. Are you taking back your earlier comment about do the phones always answer in the State Treasurer's Office?
Ask the brains over there. It's probably a member who was calling in. So anyway. Thank you. Good luck to you. Congratulations. Where will you be based out of?
Columbus, Ohio. I'll, I'll still be here.
Yeah, he'll still be here from time to time, for sure.
Home of the second Bex motorcycle museum in the world.
It's a good one.
Pickering town.
You know your geography. I live pretty close to that.
And a lot of good roller coasters in Sandusky.
Oh yeah, I see your point. All right, next.
All right, next.
Good morning, Treasurer Falwell, uh, board members, new board members, Linnea Raj and Charles on the phone. Staff and Treasurer Kim and Brett. We can start on page four here. I'll just, for those on the phone, this is Paul. I am the Client Relationship Manager at Callier Capital Management, who provides the Stable Value Fund services for the state of North Carolina's plans. Just real briefly on this page, up the left-hand corner, we have about eighty-two billion under management as of six thirty. It's down about one point two billion from the first quarter again, seeing a little bit more participants moving out of stable value and lowering the assets under management there. Really, you know, a hundred and ninety clients, staple value, separate account clients, average, been with us for fourteen years. North Carolina is almost there. We're about thirteen point seven five years as of June thirtieth. And again, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your partnership and your faith. Next page, page five. Not much, not much to discuss on the org chart here since last quarter. Really what I'd like to point out on this page is that the executive management team, Mike Norman, AJ, and the fixed income investment portfolio managers on the left, up the left-hand corner, those have not changed over the last few years. So really consistent there. If we can move to page.
If we can move to page seven under section two, just kind of gives you an idea of, again, of how interest rates are moving, how we're looking in terms of this graph. Basically, the Fed funds effective rate is that orange line. That's kind of plateaued over the last few months. The purple line is the three-year cost maturity treasury yield. And the green line is the Galliard Stable Value Separate Account Composite Blend, net crediting rate basically after all maximum fees. And really, what we'd like to show here, again, the Fed hasn't moved rates since July 23 of 23. They're at five and a quarter to 550. Few newer economic indicators that we've seen in the last couple of months see a slowing GDP unemployment, slowly creeping up, and inflation continuing its downward, albeit slow path. Economists believe that, you know, the Fed cutting rates could occur in September, could occur in November. But again, as I mentioned in the previous few meetings, that we don't predict that. We're just ready to, ready to move on. And either way, the, the interest rates move going forward. As mentioned earlier, in previous meetings, drop in yields will benefit fixed income returns, really that, that, on the shorter end of the curve, given that the, the yield curve is in an inverted shape instead of its normal upward, upward into the right trajectory over maturities. But, you know, as, as we see, if rates come down specifically on the short end of the curve, we should see rates down, prices up, and that will help the market to book ratio move closer to that 100% par, which again benefits the crediting rate, which in turn is the returns for the participants. The, the net crediting rate for state of North Carolina, about 3.08% as of 6/30. So again, continually to follow the movement of interest rates, but again, it's with a lag due to the, the book value smoothing of returns. You kind of see it flattening out over the last couple quarters. That really is an indicator of the outflows, net outflows coming out of the stable value. But again, it's not unique to state of North Carolina. It's, it's pretty much across stable value, the marketplace that participants are moving their money, either to different options within the plan or more likely they're retiring. And like Treasurer Falwell says, I keep the money in the plan. That being said, next page, page eight, basically gives some characteristics of the Stable Value Fund as of June 30th. Again, characteristics are in line with expected and expected, given the elevated interest rate environment and the inverted yield curve. Assets in the upper left-hand corner of the page, down about 68, 69 million. They were down about 99 million in the first quarter. So really not, not that big, 2.9% down. Looking at the characteristics on the lower left-hand corner of the page, again, average quality of the book value, again, that's the financial strength rating of the book value wrappers in the plan, is, remains at A+. The average quality, and this is the strength of the underlying securities, the bond securities within the plan are, are at AA. Number of contract issuers, those are the wrap providers at five. We have seen, like I mentioned, the, the blended yield or the crediting rate after all fees, going up over the quarter about five basis points to 3.8. Yield to maturities have also gone up roughly, you know, eight basis points over the quarter as well. Duration pretty, pretty flat at, you know, 3.3 years in the market book ratio, down just a, just a touch, you know, from last quarter. That being said, if you look at the assets in the upper right corner of the page, you know, we have seen numbers come down year-to-date. But again, it's not, the, the numbers that we see for outflows for the state of North Carolina are below our average, which I'll get to in the next page or so. But kind of putting, you know, the distribution in mind, really what I like to point there is, you know, we have a, we are fully invested, you know, where we're not taking advantage of short-term interest rates with, you know, the stiff fund, which is represented by the liquidity buffer and cash equivalents. To give you an idea of kind of how that yield to maturity on that left-hand part of the page, again, state of North Carolina participants are getting 5.26. That compares to a 91-day T-bill or three-month T-bill from the Fed, about 5.48, but does provide a material, I guess, increase from the three-year constant maturity treasury yield at 4.52. I looked at those numbers specifically, 91-day T-bill as of yesterday and three-year CMT. And that, those have come down from the end of the second quarter from 5.4 rate to 5.29. And three-year constant maturity treasury is even more at 4.52 as of 6/30, down to 3.8 as of August 20th. Any questions on characteristics as of June 30th? Okay. Next page is the, the performance that participants see. Again, you know, participant net book value returns are derived from the underlying fixed income performance. And cash flows, again, which flow into the crediting rate, which helps calculate this return. Again, the true drivers of returns for the stability fund are the underlying fixed income. And second quarter returns for those underlying bond funds were roughly between 50 basis points and 1.1% for the quarter. You know, again, speaking of this higher elevated interest rate environment within the inverted yield curve, again, we do expect that three-year CMT yield to outpace the staple value separate account returns. Again, due to the rise in interest rates, that's reflected immediately in the three-year cost maturity yield. Whereas in stable value, it does follow the path of interest rates. But again, with that book value smoothing of returns, there is a lag. So any questions on, on performance here? We still do provide, you know, again, longer-term outperformance, 510 and since inception, which is roughly about.
So Paul, what's the fee like in these?
Well, the, the fee, I'll, I'll get to the fees in a little bit.
Thank you, Raj.
Basically, I got, I got good news for fees too. So I'll, I'll cover that at page 16. But again, there's, there's an overall fee for Galliard managing the, the stable value portfolio. Galliard also manages a couple sleeves of the underlying fixed income, but there is no charge to that. It's, our charge is all in the stable value, I guess, umbrella fee. Then the external managers, which are in place right now, they represent about 50% of the fund. And they have a roughly weighted average fee about 5.7 basis points. So yeah, I'll, I'll get the fees a little bit more clearly in a couple of pages, but I have some good news on that as well. Next page, page 10, basically shows historical cash flows. Again, we've seen outflows, you know, pretty much consistently out. Again, the last 12 months for state of North Carolina, about 10.75. Galliard's staple value separate account average is about 12%. So right in the realm and no concerns with, with those numbers. Next page, page 11, basically shows the last nine quarters of statistics. Upper left-hand corner, that's net crediting yield, again, moving upward following the path of interest rates, as I've mentioned. Historical duration, pretty consistent at about 3.3 years. If we look at the upper right-hand corner, the historical market book, again, this is a reflection of the underlying fixed income returns on a market value basis. Those, again, have been, have been under 100 or 100 or par since, you know, interest rates started moving up. For the last quarter, we saw market books go down a little bit, and that's solely due to, as you see, the yields going a little bit up over the quarter. But pretty benign quarter-over-quarter numbers. Any questions on this page? Okay. Next page, page 12, really, really quick. These are the wrap providers, the book value wrap provider contractors within the state of North Carolina Stable Value Fund. Again, these are all synthetic GIC contract providers. Really consistent allocation of financial strength ratings quarter-over-quarter. And, you know, so no, no concerns there. And again, that, that wrap fee that you see over the right-hand corner, again, what that wrap fee represents is insurance for when we have down years for, as you remember, 22, where fixed income and equities did have negative returns, albeit stable value was positive at that point because of the book value smoothing of returns of those, you know, ups and downs of the market values. Stable value provides that consistent book value return stream. That's, that has a 0% crediting rate. If that helps. Okay. I'm going to turn now to, to fees, and that's going to be on page 16. This kind of breaks down, you know, the fees of the overall stable value fund. The, the top level, investment management fees paid to Galliard, again, that's on a tiered schedule with, with Galliard. And about 5.4 basis points over, or 5.5 basis points, I'm sorry, as of 6/30. Again, the reason why you see that, that incremental uptake is just because assets have gone down. It's on a tiered asset fee schedule. What I'd like to note about the investment management fees paid to non-affiliated investment managers, these are the external managers in your portfolio. So again, they're about 5.7 basis points right now. So good news is that with the staff's help and Galliard, we were able to negotiate fee decreases for Prudential or PGM and TCW. Both of those will occur on September 1st. And really, that 5.7 basis points is going to drop to 5.4 basis points. So again, anything we can help negotiate or on the behalf of participants, we will do. This comes out, comes down to a roughly about a $70,000 per year savings with these negotiations. Any questions on the fees here?
Yeah. So the wrap fee, is that part of the 26 bips?
It is. So that's the investment contract fee line of 14.8 basis points. So again, it's 15 for all the wrap providers, but if you include that cash liquidity buffer, the stiff, we don't wrap that. So that's why it's a little under 15 there. And that other expenses that two-tenths of a basis points, those are custody servicing. Okay.
I missed the good news.
You did miss the good news. So all I was saying is that we were able to negotiate with staff and Galliard's external manager team. We were able to negotiate lower fees on the Prudential, Prudential PGM Intermediate Aggregate Fund and the TCW Intermediate Government Credit Fund. So that 5.7 is going to go down to 5.4, which roughly is about $70,000. Like every basis point, almost. So. You know, turning ahead to page, let's turn to page 19, this kind of shows the, the allocations, again, on the left-hand column. That basically shows with the underlying fixed income allocations, who's managing what percentage. Really, Galliard manages about half, and then about 10% to five managers, you know, listed here. Prudential is PGM, Payden-Rigel, Jensen, TCW and Dodge and Cox. You know, the underlying fixed income allocation, the middle column, really hasn't changed quarter-over-quarter. We have added a little bit to agency mortgage-backed securities and asset-backed securities while trimming the, the corporate securities. But again, pretty consistent quarter-over-quarter. The next page.
And sorry, Paul, even the corporates are AA or better or?
Yeah. So weighted average, now all that together, all the securities come out to AA. Within the, the corporate space, again, we're, we solely focus on investment grade or higher. So triple B plus or triple B, I'm sorry, or higher. But again, with the weighted average calculating altogether, you come to that double. Other questions? Okay, next page is commentary. I'm not going to necessarily read all this, just basically highlights for second quarter, you know, fixed in, fixed income commentary, really overweight to spread sectors was beneficial, particularly in the corporate space overweight. And security selection was also very helpful. Security selection, asset, asset-backed securities and agency mortgage-backed securities were additive. Being longer for some of the, for some of the underlying fixed income managers, being longer duration than the benchmark was detracted, detracted to returns as interest rates went up a little bit. But really, speaking of the external managers, as mentioned in an email to staff on June 12th, 2024, and Callan, Galliard really had came out with the note that we are lowering our, our internal external manager rating for Jensen from recommended to approved, to approved. And again, this is due to the Galliard's external managers working group, loss of confidence in Jensen's ability to add positive net of fee, net of fee performance relative to its benchmark over a market cycle. So again, to kind of just give you a definition of what Galliard's recommended list is and what the approved list is. The recommended list includes our highest conviction managers selected based on their ability to effectively manage stable value portfolios and drive positive net of fee performance while meeting the highest standards of investment compliance and operational risk control. So from the five that we had on the recommended list, now we have four. The four being Dodge and Cox, which is in the plan, TCW, which is in the plan, Payden-Rigel, which is in the plan, and Income Research and Management, which is not in the plan right, right at this point. The Galliard's approved list, the managers that meet acceptable or better standards for stable value portfolio management, including investment philosophy and process consistent stake value that have had potential to add value relative to the benchmark within the stable value guidelines, and maintain a risk control framework in an operational risk profile that are appropriate for stability. So what, what this, this, this thought is, is because Galliard has discretion, we're, we're going to work with staff and, and Callan to, to look for a replacement for Jensen. And as I mentioned, the one manager that's on our recommended list that's not on, in the, the stable value fund right now is Income Research and Management. So what, what we'd like to do is coordinate with the appropriate teams with staff in addition, and then work to hopefully replace Jensen with IR and M. And we'll work with, you know, the, the teams that are needed, pretty much to figure out, you know, A, can we keep the, the separate account, change managers, or if, you know, we'll work with Bank of New York Mellon with that. But again, what we're aiming to do is try to get this change done by the end of the year. But we'll, we'll be in conversations with all interested parties. Any questions on Jensen?
Yeah, I have one. I have one. This is Bob Shea. Could, could you just go ahead and for, for context, you determined that their performance wasn't good over one market cycle? Could you just elaborate on what your definition of market cycle is?
Yeah, market cycle. So the way, you know, just try to give you a little bit background on what we thought of Jensen. So Jensen, if you, if you recall, back in 2022, they were put on Galliard's watch list due to the departure of the team's co-CIO. His name was Ty Lory. We were comfortable with the, the departure and felt it was manageable and did not result in any unintended consequences for the investment philosophy and process. But since being placed on that watch list, Jensen's investment team has stabilized, but its investment performance has continued underperforms Galliard's expectations for a recommended manager. So, you know, again, we, we believe the downgrade to an approved rating most accurately reflects Jensen's ability to add excess return over this market cycle. So a market cycle, we've been, we've been monitoring, you know, Jensen and their performance for quite some time. They do have a view where they are making some of their, let's say, bets on what is going to happen with the market on the shape of the yield curve. And they've been, they've been really putting their, their thoughts into a normalization of the yield curve and keep putting more emphasis on that. And, you know, to this date, as we've seen an inverted yield curve for, you know, since 2022, they have not changed their, their thoughts on this. So with that, performance has been negatively affected. So again, we, we think, you know, market, market cycles can pretty much range from three to five years. But, you know, again, we've been monitoring this over a few years. I, I don't have a specific, I guess, duration of what it markets.
That's great. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thanks.
And I guess, you know, that, that's the comments I have. But again, we'll, we'll work with staff and Callan to, to come up with a solution on Jensen. But again, you know, this is not specific to the state of North Carolina. Where Jensen is, is placed in our client portfolios, and we do have discretion, we are making this active change. So again, as we move away from Jensen, the fee that Galliard has negotiated with Jensen is on a tiered schedule. So as the assets leave, these are going to go up for Jensen. So as the assets leave, fees are going to go up for Jensen, you know, to the tune of maybe three, three and a half basis points. So that's just because, again, you know, more assets lowers the fee on a tiered fee asset fee scale as assets go out, fees go up. So let's just keep on. Great question. Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much and great to meet all the new members.
Traveling mercies.
All right, next.
Good morning, Mr. Trigger, I'm on the board. For allowing us to be here. My name is Weston Lewis, joined by my colleague Elizabeth Hood. We are from Callan. We are your investment consultants and what does that mean? So if we were just, just to distill it down to one single sentence, we are trying to make you all help sound investment decisions always in the best, best interest of participants. So that's, that's our role. That's what we're trying to do here. So what we're going to do is we have a quick summary of performance, what happened in the markets, then we've got a lot more on the agenda today than we usually have. So we'll be brief with, with the performance because what, what the other things that we're bringing today are markedly more important here in, in the context of what you all are monitoring. Really quickly, I'll, I'll go to page, two pages past this to our just usual summary of what happened in markets. Markets appeared relatively docile here in the second quarter, off to a very strong start in the first half of twenty twenty-four. If you look underneath the hood, you would notice that the strong performance certainly in the first half of the year in the quarter really coming from this very select few of stocks. For those that are new on the board, this is going to probably sound new to you. For those who have been on the board for a while, we're going to sound like a broken record. This, this magnificent seven driving stocks. And so as you look at that, either the Russell one thousand growth index there in the top right or the S and P five hundred index, for that S and P five hundred index, that would have been, would have been a negative number had it not been for six stocks. So, or maybe even five. And maybe what is a little bit different here about this quarter relative to past quarters, several quarters, is that you're starting to see some dispersion among these mega cap names. So on the bottom side, we had Tesla. Tesla's down about eleven percent for the year, whereas Nvidia is up about a pretty eye-popping hundred and sixty-six percent for the year. And these are very large mega cap names. So, so to, you know, generate a hundred and sixty-six percent return, that's billions of dollars in, in market capitalization just being added on a regular basis. So that, that is what is really, as you look at the comparisons, large versus small, US versus non-US, it is these seven names that are, are really distorting those, those comparisons. So this has been a theme, not just for the last quarter, not for the last two quarters, but really over the last five to seven years. And at some point, that will, you know, reverse in, in the trend. But, you know, certainly for the, these periods, looking back, this is, this has been the dominant theme. And then looking outside the US, there was a little, quarter, there was a little bit of a reversal in trends and that Japan was down, whereas Japan had, had pretty good performance here for, for a period of time. Japan pulled back some and then emerging markets, which was on somewhat of a losing streak, had really good contribution from China this quarter. But China and India has been a really strong performer of the last year plus, whereas China had, you see that they're the sole negative there at the bottom for the one-year return. They, they actually showed a positive return, strong seven point one percent here for the quarter. So that was one of the themes here, growth versus value. We talk about this a lot in the US, that has not really been outside the US. As you think about why, there really isn't a, there are some, some dominant mega cap names, but none that have dominated such a way as the magnificent seven have in, inside the US. And then bonds, really flat for the quarter. All eyes remain on the Fed as to what they're going to do with the federal funds rate as well as, you know, are we headed into a recession? How, how many rate cuts are there going to be for, for the year? We've seen a pretty wide gap in what economists are expecting, which expecting fewer rate cuts versus what the market is expecting. Market is still pricing in around one hundred basis points of rate cuts here to happen between now and the end of the year, whereas a lot of economists are suggesting it's, it's going to be less than that. So likely we'll see something happen in September, but it's anybody's guess as to what happens after that. And, you know, in terms of recession and what is on, on the horizon there, the leading indicators, aside from that labor, that surprise labor market result that we got in July, really a lot of the indicators are suggesting that the economy is on sound footing and a lot of optimism built into the economy and just a, a number of things that, that don't make us appear to, to look as, as fragile as something positive. We'll go to page three and talk more about your plan specifically. The, the value as of the end of the quarter was at sixteen point nine billion. This is, as far as I can tell, a high watermark here for, for the plan in terms of movements of participants. So just you all heard Goalmaker, we structured this, this plan in such a way to where there's a do it for me solution with Goalmaker. And there are also some, you know, do it yourself type features. So if a participant wants to make their own asset allocation or invest in a strategy that differs from what Goalmaker gives you, they're able to do that here. So, and a lot of times you'll see in, in more of those do it yourself strategies, some, some trading that occurs during volatile periods. Well, this quarter was, as I mentioned, pretty docile, not very volatile, so you don't see much movement in that, that new investment. We will see if that occurs here in the third quarter with all the, you know, action that's happened in the equity market and some action in the fixed income market as well. So that we'll just have to wait and see there. Going to page four of our report here, this is just, in our, in our opinion, as it relates to performance, this is number one on the hierarchy is to, because this is what participants see, it's the options that matter. So not just the underlying managers, it's how do they build up into what the, what ultimately the performance that goes to the participant. These listed here on page four are all net of fee compared to net of fee peer groups. So if you're looking at that tier two passive, these are all the passive funds, they are in line with expectations, they're doing what they were hired to do, which is track their respective indices at the low fee. I will just mention, and this is not something that we're worried about or something that's outside of expectations, but this is what we monitor on the passive side is how much tracking error is there between the index and the fund itself. And so there is a little bit of tracking error coming from two, two funds. Number one, that SMidcap passive fund, that, you know, is on the, tracking error on the bad side and then tracking error on the good side is right below it on the, the three-year for the inflation responsive fund. So, you know, in passive world, tracking error is, is never good, but, you know, just something that we're, we're paying attention to and we'll continue to monitor. All right, and then below, we have the tier two active net of fee options here. This is again, what participants see, so I'll, I'll start with the good maybe. The fixed income fund, as you look across all timeframes, the strategies are outperforming their respective benchmarks, net of fees generally ahead of median, the median managers. So that, that one's good. I would argue in fixed income world, this is where the active managers tend to be the most consistent. So how their, how their performance patterns look is they'll outperform seventy-five, eighty, you know, ninety percent of the time. And where their underperformance comes is usually a big amount of underperformance in a single quarter. If credit spreads really widen out, that's where fixed income managers tend to underperform. But, you know, consistently building that back and, you know, consist, more consistently outperforming the end. On the equity side, it's, it's the opposite. Here we're just trying to get, you know, fifty-five, sixty percent of the time outperforming. That actually ultimately leads to a pretty good investment rate of return over time. But, so that fixed income fund being good, maybe still good, but, you know, you heard from Paul on stable value, why, why it's not great is money market funds tend to be the, what sponsors are talking about right now. Do we need to change stable value to a money market? Our opinion still remains that stable value is what we would prefer to see as the capital preservation option. But, you know, in the meantime, stable value funds are lagging kind of what the other competing capital preservation option is, is doing. That, that could all change if, like I said, if the Fed decides to lower rates. And then the three categories, not good, but also not bad. The large cap core equity fund, international equity fund, as well as the small and mid-cap equity fund, these are all, you know, after fees, they're below their benchmarks here over generally, the, the small and mid-cap is ahead of the benchmark over the three years, but they're, you know, after you subtract out the fees. The objective is to be better than benchmark and ranking better than median. So as you look at this, in, in this time window, you know, we're, we're a little bit behind that for, for the managers. I will say, just for some institutional memory and some perspective, where this board has been most active here over the, the last couple of years is on this small and mid-cap equity fund. There's been some changes made. We did start to see some good positive momentum coming from that. The last year has been especially difficult for the surviving managers in that structure. So Ernest and Brown, you know, still sticking to what they do, still in line with expectations from our perspective. It's just been a challenging environment and, but, but, you know, we, we ultimately do believe in these managers, but it has been a difficult year and that's where a lot of the underperformance is coming from over the year. All right, so with that, I'll jump just really quickly to a page that we don't normally see, but we did want to give the new board members, you know, some perspective here. Page ten, that's the fee matrix and this is quite an eye chart. So I will just summarize it and say, what are we going for here? What are we trying? And we, if you look at some of the historical documents, we actually did what we call a fee study for the managers, I believe it was last quarter. But what, what this is telling you is, is this board has been vigilant about fees over the past. And as you look at kind of the gray shaded lines, those are fees versus mutual fund peer groups. So if a smaller municipality went out on their own and said, we're going to, we're going to run our own plan, that's the type of management fee that they would be likely paying for, you know, a small and mid-cap core fund would be around eighty-three basis points. So these are institutional fees for mutual funds. But you all, on the other hand, you know, have, have paid significantly less leveraging the scale of this plan. So that's sixteen, seventeen billion dollars using separate accounts, using more competitive vehicles to gain access to these managers. You all have done that, you've saved, you know, a considerable amount for participants in, in doing that. So then the ones that aren't gray shaded, you'll notice they're a different peer group. So these are looking at separate accounts versus separate account peer groups. So these are, you know, trying to truly show, well, how competitive are they versus the vehicle that they're managing? And for the most part, all the managers are, are below the median. In, in all cases, the managers are competitive. So, you know, don't necessarily have to be below median. In, in the case of Sands, where you see that they're about three basis points higher than the median, there's a good reason for that. They're a concentrated portfolio, they're capacity constrained, they're managing fewer stocks, those tends, tend to be, those strategies tend to be a little bit more expensive.
Weston, can I add one thing?
Sure.
Just want to point out that we can also leverage the size of the pension plan in, you know, helping to drive fees down. Several of these managers that we have in the supplemental plan, we also have in the pension plan, so we're able to leverage the size of that to be able to drive down fees for, for both the DB and the DC plan.
That's a great point. All right, and then going to page thirteen. So if, if we think about, well, what are the more important pages for you all to focus on in our report? If, if we were to say, all right, you've got fifteen minutes to prepare here, this is how we would, where we would point you in our report. Just, this gives a very quick snapshot of what we think are of the overall managers of the strategies. So, you know, this is our scorecard and we're not just looking at performance. Performance is what happened in the rearview mirror. We're looking at the people, process, the philosophy, we're trying to determine, because those are the things that ultimately drive performance. So we're trying to determine, is there anything that is noteworthy or concerning, certainly among the, the people and the process that, that we've observed. I will say, just to kind of keeping with my promise of being brief, there are two managers that are on watch, that are formally on watch for you all. Number one is this Macquarie large cap value. And if we were to say the hierarchy of what we're most concerned about, you know, likely Macquarie, it's not just performance. So you all have watch lists for a couple of reasons and what does that mean to you all? And from our perspective, all your managers are on watch every quarter. Your perspective, you know, the watch formally signals that if there's performance that's out, out of line with what we thought were, you know, reasonable expectations or if there are, you know, changes in personnel that we're, we view as, as somewhat cautionary. So in the case of Macquarie, it's a little bit of, of more geared towards performance being outside of expectations. And a lot of that has to do with some personnel changes that happened four or five years ago where the new team has, has, you know, really failed together to string, to get, failed to string together some, some good performance over a longer term timeframe. And then I will just say that, just while we're on this page, one that's getting a lot of attention and a lot of, you know, discussion among Callan and staff is Sands Capital. You know, I think the natural question is, why are they on watch? So, you know, in, in a lot of cases, I mentioned Sands is a very concentrated manager, they tend to own thirty names or less. They, they had had a very difficult twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. This perspective, twenty twenty COVID year, they outperformed the index by thirty percent. The problem that occurred was they, you know, a lot of the companies that did exceptionally well had just pulled earnings forward and during those COVID years and then kind of the, those names lagged in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Our perspective was, this is what Sands does, they, they move around, they're very different from the benchmark. And historically, when they've gone through periods like they did in twenty twenty-one and two, they rebound pretty, pretty significantly. They had a great twenty twenty-three, everything was kind of moving in the right direction. Then this quarter happened to where they're eight percent behind the benchmark. What did they do here this quarter that was different from what they've done in the past? Not, not much of anything. They have historically been underrated to these magnificent seven names. And that's something that we knew that we were getting from them. In this quarter, where Mag Seven really was what it was all about, they just didn't catch any of that updraft. So there has, in, in July and August, there has been a reversal in that the Mag Seven has pulled back, small cap is now performing large cap. So we'll see if, if Sands is able to. So we'll see if Sands is able to, to gather some of that back. But, you know, this, this is, as I mentioned, one that, you know, is getting a lot of attention. And, you know, there, there could be, you know, a, a, a new message coming back in, in future board meetings to where we recommend actually putting us more formally on watch. For now, we think it, it remains where it should be. And then just going down, I will mention for kind of that institutional memory here, the other manager that's on watch is on page fifteen. This is the PCW Core Plus. This has less to do with performance and more to do with some personnel changes. You see that yellow highlighted there in, in product people. So some of the, the long-term portfolio managers, some of the generalist portfolio managers that they have, namely Laird Landeman and Steve Kane, retiring, no longer with the strategy. They, they came from what was called the old Met West team. And they were, Met West was purchased by TCW many years ago. And they were the kind of last remaining soldiers there. And so with their retirement, you're, you're really getting more of what was the legacy TCW. We are becoming more and more comfortable with this change. They have a very deep bench of, of professionals that I think are, are solid portfolio managers, but just something that we continue to watch. And with that, I, I will conclude my remarks on performance, and we'll, we'll keep moving through the rest of the issue.
Any comments or questions?
Just a simple question, in your columns of assessment, right, managers, product types? There's no growth or outflows in there, but that's in the commentary section. So do you have any things? Just on their, how is the rest of the market viewing them in terms of their portfolio growth versus, or is it captured in one of those columns? I just.
Product dynamics. The product dynamics column?
Oh, product dynamics, okay.
That captures fees. So if we see significant inflows, significant outflows, if the fund gets to be too big at the same time, sometimes that can be a concern, outflows as well. And it could also capture things like style direction. So those are.
Those are the capture. Okay.
So it's indirect, but we're certainly happy to follow up with numbers for any of the managers that you'd like to see.
Yeah, especially if there's a threshold of outflows over two quarters, that should be like a orange or red flag.
All right, moving on, and it's good news, Mr. Treasurer. So next up, we have another fee review. So this is for the administrative fees, so moving back from investment management fees. Weston mentioned, we did a deep dive on those last quarter. And so now we're focusing more on what it costs to administer the plan. So that day-to-day, taking money off of their paycheck, putting it into their account, helping them take loans, moving into all those administrative items are what we're going to focus on here. And on page two, just a very little summary, I think we've covered today, I think everybody knows fees are important. So we don't need to belabor that too much. But every dollar that gets paid in fees is a dollar that a participant's not saving. So we want to make sure that we're getting competitive fees, and we want to measure that versus a benchmark so that we can define when we say reasonable, when we say fair. We look at others to help us benchmark what that means. And we also look at the value that, so we know that sometimes you get what you pay for. So if something is more expensive than something else, we want to take a deep dive to see, are we getting more value for that higher fee or not? So again, today focusing on the administrative fees. What we found here is that, and this is Empower, is, is the administrative, we talk about the record-keeping fees, but it's really Empower. So what we found here is that fees are fair and competitive and well below those of other providers. So very, very good news. And what we'll walk through here is, we'll go ahead and just kind of high level what we've looked at, set the stage to document what the fees are, and then the process for benchmarking those as well. So page, let's see, so page four, we'll go through kind of the overview sections pretty quickly. But on page four, this really just covers first and foremost, we want to gather all the information we can on fees. So there's that per participant fee that everyone sees and that we talk about. There are additional fees that Empower pays or receives. And then there can also be indirect that aren't necessarily captured. So Callan's job is to go through and find all of those and document them so that you all can see them, and then we can benchmark those. The next page, page five, highlights what those are. So we talked about the administrative fees, and that's that day-to-day, ongoing work that Empower does. There are transaction fees. So here, the biggest one here is loans, if a participant takes a loan, pays back a loan. Sometimes there's a kind of like basis, you just have the loan. That's money that participants are paying that goes into Empower's revenue. We want to make sure we know what that is and that those are fair. Again, the third, investment management fees, we've already, we've already covered those.
Let's just pick up just a little bit for the audience, thank you.
Sorry, did my voice never appear as well? So I apologize. And then the last is other revenue. So this is things like rollover. So if a participant wants to roll over to Empower account, that's revenue that we want to make sure that we're capturing there. Page six gives us a sense of the current state. So the right side just shows the investment assets, Weston covered those. On the left-hand side here, we know the plan assets, and this is as of December, just to get clean data from Empower. So about sixteen billion, we know it's higher than that now. And I looked back to the, one of the prior analysis that we did nineteen, using nineteen data back in twenty twenty. So the plan has grown, at that time it was about thirteen billion, and there were about three hundred and eighteen thousand participants. Now it's up to three hundred and forty-six. So the plan has grown, the average participant balance, I was happy to see that that's up to, it was about forty-two million, or sorry, forty-two thousand, now it's up to fifty-one. So that's a nice, not fee-related exactly, but just a good, a good sign of that participant readiness. And then the participation rate is up from about thirty percent, too. So more money in the plan, more accounts in the plan, more to administer. The next page, page seven, translates that into the fees that are being paid to Empower today. So you'll see in that box on the right, that high level, that first and foremost, that participant fee that's charged every year, so that's twenty-five dollars per participant, which is down. Some of you will recall, these have been coming down from, it was thirty-one in the 401k plan and thirty-four in the 457. So those are down. The event-based transaction fees, again, primarily coming from loans, are about seven dollars a participant. These are higher than they were a few years ago, and that's pretty consistent with what we've seen across the board. So think about what happened in twenty twenty, we've seen the number of loans that participants have taken increasing a little bit. So it's higher, but that's due to participant activity as opposed to Empower raising a fee. And again, we've, something, it's a trend that we've seen and understand there.
Is it how much are people loaned?
Sorry.
How much are the people loaned?
They charge an initiation fee of sixty dollars, and there's no ongoing maintenance fee. And a question that we get a lot is, well, should we try to negotiate that to zero? There's a risk in that. We do want a participant to think before they take money out of the plan. We don't want anybody to view this as an ATM. Really want people to, to keep saving and to not have any penalties. So we want a little bit of a deterrent, but then they're not charging an ongoing fee. So there's no extra hardship on an ongoing basis for participant needs, if they at least have to stop and think.
Does Empower have a securities loan platform where we get remated back for any securities that y'all might be lending to people who are shorting stocks? That would be more custody or mailing, have it on the custody side.
Okay.
Thank you.
And do you have a float? We'll get to that in a minute. It's on securities, we have money that does get remated back.
Okay.
We added the trusted custody fees here. So this is not paid to Empower, this is paid to Bank of New York. Some of the other vendors, when we benchmarked, they include those fees. So we wanted to bring those in here, so it's apples to apples, but just to know that's not actually paid to Empower. So the total overall estimated fees are a little over twelve million, so that's about, and that's thirty-six dollars per participant total. So if you think about, we've made a number of comments throughout the discussion today about what a participant might pay outside the plan. I feel very confident in saying that somebody on their own, without the benefit of the ability to leverage the sixteen, oh seventeen billion dollars here, the hundred and twenty-three billion on the DB side, the four trillion in client assets that Callan's leverage brings, would pay a lot more than this. So relative to other options, extremely competitive. And then we'll see it's competitive to other offerings within the DC space, too. So the next few pages talk about the process, and I'm just going to summarize those. Effectively, we went out to market. It's in the large cap growth space, for example, it's really easy to benchmark, everybody's doing the same thing. They're running the same kind of portfolio. When we look at administration, every plan is very different. And so it depends on the number of underlying payrolls, number of employers, number of participants, what the underlying options look like. So to be able to benchmark this, we went out to market and did talk to staff. We disclosed who you all are, who we were asking for. That allows us to get a more real and accurate estimate from the different record keeper providers. And we gave them high-level characteristics of the plans so we could see how complex it was. Again, just trying to get apples to apples to be able to make this comparison. So we got those numbers back and summarized those on page eleven. And again, good news across the board. So what we're seeing here is that we're trying to get that total directed interest fees documented and benchmarked. So on that per participant fee, we've got the quoted from, and Empower's on the right, the two other providers are on the left. I guess I should mention that, too. So we sent this to Nationwide and to Voya. There, there are a lot of record keepers out there. There are not a lot of record keepers that can handle the complexity of a large state DC plan. So we get asked a lot, well, what about Vanguard? This is not Vanguard's bailiwick, this is way outside of their bread and butter. So we don't even ask them because we know that that's not going to be a real concern. So again, these are providers that can administer. When we did this five years ago, we had an extra one, which was Empower, because there was Prudential and Empower. So with the merger, we have one less candidate. So that twenty-five dollars is lower than both Nationwide and Voya, a good bit lower than Nationwide. So in dollars, obviously lower. We also looked at the transaction fees, those are lower as well. So looking at both loans and also things like DROs, so domestic relations orders, anything that might need to be processed there. And then we have education fees. The other two providers have that as a separate line item, whereas Empower includes that. So just a different way of, of pricing. So Empower's a zero because it's above the line. So that total fee in dollars that you're paying to Empower is significantly lower than what Voya or Nationwide would charge. So eleven versus fifteen versus twenty-four. So that's good news, that per participant is much, much lower. And then even when we bring in the trust custody fees, because again, those are included by the other two versus outsourced, we're still significantly lower, that thirty-six versus forty-five versus seventy-one. So almost half one of the providers here. So again, overall, very, very competitive fees in addition to, you know, we see every quarter the level of service, dedicated resources to, to the plans, to the participants across the state. And then the last one we've got over here is on page twelve, and this is that loan, the transaction fees that you were asking about, Mr. Sam, on page twelve. So their fee is sixty, it is a little bit higher than Nationwide and Voya, but there's no loan maintenance fee. And that's how that number ended up on a dollar basis, we will lower because we're not charging on, on an ongoing basis, and no charge for those transaction orders. So the takeaway is, these are good, these are competitive, well below the median. And then we will continue to monitor this. So part of our job is to make sure that as things change and evolve within the market, that we're continuing to capture any potential for additional savings over time. So this is something that we look at and report back on an annual basis. Next one on the agenda is a request from the Treasurer to look at the small mid-cap structure and the performance there. So Weston referenced the change a few years ago, so in twenty twenty, we looked at this. And on page two here, you can see the original structure on that far right side. So a manager on the growth side had been terminated, some of that money went into the index, and that left the option in twenty twenty with an overweight to value stocks relative to growth stocks. We had a little bit of a style bias in there, leaning towards value. So Wedge and then Ernest at the time, we were leveraging their value strategy. So we had almost two, roughly two times value versus growth, and then a higher index weighting in about twenty-eight and three quarters percent of the active option. And so in the interim, the board met, we had a number of discussions around this and decided to neutralize that style bias. So you'll see the, the value manager went to thirty percent, and we transitioned Ernest's strategy from value to core. So they had another core product that was, they had equal conviction in since they've happened, and then kept thirty percent around. So that was an equal, equal parts growth value and core. And it also lowered the index component, not because we're opposed to passive, we're very, very strong proponents of passive, but just recognizing that there's an active and a passive option for participants to choose. We felt like it was a great to modify that, too. And we called that interim because we were also looking at Wedge, which is a name we did not see in the report today because they were placed. So due to turnover, due to asset flows and performance as well, some poor stock selection, the board made the decision to transition from Wedge to AB, so we did a search, replaced them. And so that brings us to the current structure, which is just moving from Wedge to AB. The bottom of the page shows the rough outcomes there. So the fee did go up, which is why I think the request was made to continue to look at this. So we are paying more, we need to be really diligent to see, are we getting more value for increasing that fee from thirty-five basis points to forty-three? And the forty-three is still, again, we've benchmarked that versus peers, it's still well below the median, but recognizing it's higher. The excess, the excess return after fees is higher with the current structure. So we ran a hypothetical analysis of had we kept everything in the original versus that interim, if we had kept Wedge in there versus the structure today, how would they have performed? So just to get that apples-to-apples estimate, we're pleased to report back that even after that higher fee, participants have been better served with performance. Each three just gives us a cumulative summary of that number, so you can see that breakout. And then page four gives some additional statistics. We want to be mindful, too, of risk. This is participant capital, so as much as we want high returns, we also want to be very sensitive to the risk that we subject them to. So even on a risk-adjusted basis, the current structure has added value. Questions?
Questions on that? Thank you very much.
All right.
One more.
One more thing, and this is, you know, not to be redundant, because you all, you all two quarterly talk to your stable value manager. But as part of our agreement with you all, once a year, we're asked to give an update on stable value. So not to be overly redundant with what Paul has already given you all. I'll skip over a lot of this and just point out some of the things that provide that broader perspective of not just what Galliard is doing, but how does Galliard compare versus the broader universe? So just quick summary on page four, our opinion of Galliard has not changed. We, Galliard, we pay to Galliard favorably relative to the other offerings out there. They have an incredible investment team. Are very good about monitoring those external managers, you know, as a broader perspective. Not all stable value managers will give you external management. Some, just the T-Roe Price, if you went as the T-Roe Price stable value fund, it would be a hundred percent managed by T-Roe Price. If you went to others, you might get, you know, a higher allocation to external management. VESCO comes to mind there. So Galliard is a blend that, you know, brings together both external managers and their internal management. And, you know, it's in terms of the professional staff overseeing the external managers. They do a big job of, of staying on top of, of those external managers. I think the big takeaways here are what is happening in the stable, stable value environment. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but there, there does seem to be some, you know, on the margin outflows coming from stable value. I'm going to jump forward to page ten and just provide some perspective. So in your, in your book that we talked about a little bit earlier, we showed Galliard's stable value net of fees versus what is a homing old fund. So again, if you were a, a, a smaller plan that was trying to get access to. So again, if you were a smaller plan that was trying to get access to stable value, likely end up in a homing of fund. Well, you're able to leverage those large assets to get a separate account. And so here we compare versus a separate account here group. Similar leading in that Galliard ranks competitively versus peers over that historical timeframe. However, in stable value, it's this very unique animal that maybe the past isn't the best way to look at performance and what they're doing. Let's look at kind of how they rank on a crediting rate and how they rank on that market to book ratio. So what is the portfolio likely to do going forward? So if you go to the next page, on page 11, we look at both of those comparisons. That shaded gray area is the 10th to 90th percentile. There's a little white line that you can kind of barely see that is the median. But the, the blue line is where Galliard has ranked over time consistently above median on the amount of dollars that crediting rate that's coming back to participants. So that yield, if you want to think of it kind of like a yield, that's what Galliard, you know, been pretty consistently above their, their peer median. And then also on the market to book, so the kind of that stability of the portfolio. And, you know, this is what predicts what they're able to send back in that crediting rate to participants. But that has, that also has ranks certainly more favorably here of the last, you know, year or so, pretty high relative to peers. So that's, that's what we want to see. And then finally, just, well, not finally, ultimately here, looking at some of the things. This is different from what we have talked about in the last couple of years. This is on page 14. Where we did a little bit of a, kind of a new exercise with Galliard this year and just thinking about, well, do we want to relook at the underlying structure currently? Galliard manages about 50% of the assets internally. Externally, they send, you know, the other 50% to be managed by some others that you see here, Dodge and Cox. And, you know, PGM and some of the others. So we looked at some different scenarios that were just kind of hypotheticals that, you know, what, what is the benefit to be gained by it? So in scenarios one and two, we looked at replacing some of the underlying managers. With the fees, what would that have meant for performance? And then scenario three is more in line with what, you know, I would say Galliard probably has for the majority of their clients, where they manage a little, manage more internally with the lesser amount being managed externally. So we looked at all these and, you know, weighed the pros and cons ultimately. With staff, we decided that, you know, where, where you all are currently is not a bad place. It's, it has provided some of that manager diversification. And we think status quo is certainly reasonable and, and preferred here at this moment. And then finally, now finally, on page 17, just, this is what I think has a lot of sponsors questioning, if this is the right strategy. But this is similar to what you saw for, from Galliard. On the left-hand side, this blue line is what the money market funds have returned over time. And you see pretty consistently over the last 20 some years that, or close to 20 years, that stable value has offered this premium over money markets. And it's, you know, in order to get a participant retirement ready, they can't be, you know, compounding at 0% to, to help get them there. So stable value has offered this, this return premium over time. Here in the last two and a half years, just given what the extreme rise in short-term rates, money market funds have really come back and, you know, are offering a pretty good yield at the moment. So I think a lot of people are questioning, should we change? We ultimately think this will revert back to more normal historical trends. But right now, that inverted yield curve is, it remains a challenge. But over time, it's just going to take time for that crediting rate to catch up to where yields are on, on money markets currently. We do think that stable value does offer some advantages, that the smoothing dynamics and the historical ups and downs participants have realized over time.
And to be clear, we don't have a money market option.
No. And, and a lot of times the reason why is because that's considered a competing option. So those insurance companies that wrap the, the underlying portfolios, they, they look at that and say, that's a risk to us. And either you get rid of the, the money market option or we'll, we'll stop wrapping your product or, you know, there's kind of this equity wash and, you know, that gets complicated. So, yeah, so I think that is a large part why a lot of sponsors don't offer both of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Getting that question, so wanted to make sure that everybody's armed with the information. By the decision we made in case you get asked to.
Thanks. Any questions? Thank you both. Traveling mercies wherever you're headed next. We're next now to the two Chris's, not the ones on the red.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Chris Morris. I'm here with Chris Berg. We oversee the, the investments for, for the supplemental plans. Just for the benefit of the new board members, we, we give a compliance report every quarter related to the investments. It's typically focused on our divestment policies, which are mandated by statute, executive orders that are, that are mandated by, you know, the federal government. And then also our investment guidelines, which we monitor. All of our investment guidelines for all of our underlying investment managers. We, we utilize BNY Mellon to help us monitor those on a daily basis. So we just typically provide the board with, with any notable exceptions with regards to, to anything related to those items. So I'll let Chris Berg kind of handle the brief overview of this quarter.
Yeah. Also, just to give background on myself, I started last year. I came from CapTrust. Which is right down the road. It's a private company that also an investment advisory service, kind of similar to Callon from a consulting piece. I'm happy to be here. Just wanted to give a quick introduction. It's nice to meet you guys. But yeah, starting with divestment policies versus prohibited holdings. The supplemental retirement plan staff identified one prohibited holding subject to divestment. We identified Unilever PLC, which is on the company's boycotting, boycotting Israel prohibited investment list. All managers, even ones that did not hold it, were promptly notified on December 22nd, 2023. And all relevant managers have been instructed to divest from some prohibited holdings within a 180-day period, starting December 21st, 2023. Unilever was divested by all relevant managers by June 6th, this year, 2024, within that 180-day window. And as of June 30th, 2024, there were no prohibited holdings in the portfolio.
Okay, just jumping real quick, just a little bit of background. So we update our divestment list annually, like I said, based on statute, but we have a process. And we utilize a third party to help us develop these lists. You know, we have the boycott Israel, companies boycotting Israel prohibition as well as Iran. So we, we revise and we publish our list annually. So the numbers change on an annual basis. So this one that Chris was talking about on the December 22nd was when Unilever was added to the, the divestment list for, for, for boycotting Israel. So just so you're aware, that, that's an annual process that we go through and those lists do change. And we, you know, react to that based on whoever's on the list or who, who comes off the list. We ensure that all of our investment managers are aware and if they need to divest, that they, that they divest in the appropriate window.
For the executive order, BNY Mellon continued daily compliance testing for prohibited holdings, identified as communist Chinese military industrial companies, or CCMCs for short, related to the presidential executive order 14032. No SRP investment managers were invested in this CCMC list during the quarter. And finally, the investment guidelines, the supplemental retirement plan staff continues to monitor investment manager guidelines on a daily basis. And there were no material issues during the quarter.
Anything else? Any questions about that? As we start to adjourn, the D1 sign for public comment. Okay. Hearing none, we're now deemed the public comments section closed. Just a few housekeeping things and we'll go around the horn very quickly. The, thank the board members for being flexible about the December 6th meeting. I've, I've never missed, I don't think I've ever missed one of these meetings. But, and that would be my last meeting. So I appreciate us going, you being flexible and putting that on Friday. Charlie, I started thinking about the swearing in and since you and I have sworn at each other a number of times over the last 20 years, I'm not sure that's going to be necessary, but we'll go through the process in December, Charlie, if you're still with us. We talked earlier about schools. Schools are opening up. And it's time to put phones down and eyes up, especially as it relates to school buses and school safety and anything related to protecting children. I want to thank the staff who presented here today, especially as it relates to loans out of these portfolios. There are lots of things that people who follow the markets look at as far as leading indicators and, and economic stress. One that I've always paid attention to is people drawing money out of their 401K plans. I think that's a very interesting leading indicator that not a lot of people look at. So I appreciate that. The next treasurer, in conjunction with these both boards, hopefully will carry on the initiative, which I didn't get cranked up as like I would like to have over the last 12 months, regarding beneficiaries. He just heard, you know, a few moments ago, some presentations and, and I'll make this quick. Like Michael and Matt are up here, they join rookie school, they're not married. They're filling out all this paperwork and they just put each other down as their beneficiary. Then they go on to get married, start raising families. Something happens to them in the line of duty and this office is stuck with the words on paper. And it's some of the most tragic things that I deal with as the treasurer is. And we have had instances where people have become married, do have children, are killed in line of duty. And their families aren't named. So just like you check your smoke alarm, we're going, the next treasurer and this board will have some initiative to get people to check their smoke alarm, quote their beneficiaries. It's kind of a, it's kind of a big deal. So I hope somebody will pick up the mantle on that because even in some cases where we ask the name beneficiary to renounce, they won't renounce. So still can't do anything for families and, and the loved ones. And want to welcome Jody here. Rob, I guess you're just the eye candy today. So.
This is the first time I was called. I'll take it.
So I want to thank you all for coming here. The PNI article, I'm going to deputize Jeff to get the PNI article all out to you. Email, dollar caps on 401K matches seen as being more fair. It's not just this article. It's not just that little article, but it's, it's, excuse me. Trying to get you out of here. It's all of this page about being more fair. So anyway, it talks about proportionality of when you do dollar matches instead of percentage matches as it relates to the, as it relates to the ability to do the most good for the most number of people. Most of them stay gum and don't make C figures. So we'll get that to you. This board, the next treasurer and with Reed, the staff will have to keep a close eye on the Secure Act. A lot of that's been implemented, but a lot of that's going to, is still in the oven. And it's going to be coming out over the next couple of years. And I think it's going to present some major changes to maybe how things are done with supplemental retirement. Some good, maybe some bad. There'll be a discussion going forward about target date funds. We issued this, we sent this out to the current board members, but I brought an extra couple of copies for the U-Board members about, seems to be some movement toward using target date funds. And whether that, it may sound good, but is it appropriate for this, a plan of this size? So I'll give that to you. On the divestments, just to be clear, we do not act on the threat of a boycott. We act on boycotts. I was criticized over the last two years, especially on the Ben and Jerry's thing about, you know, why did I not act faster versus other states regarding Unilever? Because we do not react to the threat of a boycott of anything. We react to the boycott itself. So up, up until the time when Unilever made a decision about do this, do that, divest this, franchise this, whatever was going on with Unilever, we did, we just, we just stood in the box until something actually happened where we had to comply with the law. So I appreciate the staff doing that. And with that, I'll go around the horn and see if any member who's joined us virtually would like to say anything. Okay. And those present.
Next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raj.
Just to thank staff in that $26 or $32 fee, whatever it was, was quite remarkable.
Mr. Treasurer, this is Bob Shay. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely, sir.
Hey, I just want to thank staff for the flexibility. This tool, the go-to meeting tool, which I haven't used very often, is fantastic. I started this morning at home, spent an hour in the car and now I'm at RDU and the connectivity was flawless. So just some feedback on allowing the flexibility of not being there. I'm traveling to see my granddaughter. So it was very much appreciated.
Jeff, thank you, Bob. And just would like to, like to, you recognize Patty and all the work that she does to put all this together and getting the room ready. It's, it works for us most of the time, but there's times where, you know, when it doesn't. And so thank you, Patty, for making sure that everything is set and ready for this meeting.
And if she really likes you, you get a Diet Coke.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Broner, thank you for joining us. You've met the folks from all the vendors who are here. So I'm sure you're going to take an opportunity to introduce yourself. We talked about the stable value fund a few moments ago. Reed was here when I got here. Christopher and his co-CIO were here when I got here. Tom was here when I got here. So my point is that, you know, transitions can be tough. But I often get in trouble for saying this. When you're in the check delivery business, there's no Democrat, Republican, unaffiliated or libertarian money at the treasurer's office. It's all green. And that's what we focus on, staying in the check delivery business. And these folks kept us in the check delivery business during a time when Iowa and this office was put under tremendous pressure, especially during COVID to shut down. And I'd just like to remind this board that in some parts of North Carolina, the largest check to go in those communities every 30 days is the checks coming out of this office. 401, 457 pension, healthcare, prescription drugs. So we have to find a way to stay in the check delivery business, no matter what we're confronted with. And lastly, I look forward to seeing many of you in December. That'll be my, my last meeting. And I think this board has made some courageous decisions over the last eight years. And staff has been great to work with. We'll have slightly more to say about all that in December. But I welcome the new board members. I think, Raj, I think you and I have met before, but I'm not quite sure.
I was going to say that, but I just didn't, I couldn't remember where. So I just wanted to embarrass myself.
Well, Greg and I practice yoga together, so you could have embarrassed yourself. Well, Greg and I practice yoga together, so you could have embarrassed yourself and said that. And I've seen you lately, by the way. We'll talk about that later. Okay. All right. But welcome, but I, I know this pertains to you, but also Lanier and, and Charlie. I know your intuitions, I know your hearts, and I know your minds. And because I've worked with you for so long, and I'm sure Raj is, based on his questions today are going to be, he's going to be right up to speed with, with that. So leaving the board in good stead and good hands, and I think the governor made some great appointments to this board. We lost a lot of history, a lot of talent, but my experience has been all these folks that have, have left these boards or leave these boards, that they're always, their hearts, their minds, and their door is always open because there's a lot of historical knowledge, especially with Melinda Baron. She was on this board for 18 years, a long time. So she saw a lot of changes. So there's always people there to help us lose our way. So anyway, thank you all. And with that, we do have some, everybody's going through something. We have some board members who are going through things, and so we, we wish them well. And I'd like to adjourn in the spirit of, in the hope that somehow our communities and our country can be brought together like we were during sports, during the Olympics. That is my wish, and I like to adjourn with that as a hope. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion second for, for discussion, hearing none, the clerk called. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse. Bob Shay.
Aye.
Raj Singh.
Aye.
Steve Bean.
Aye.
And Robert Hilton.
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.